I think we're good. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and first is to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business is to approve the minutes from December ninth. So if I can get a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes from December ninth.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
And Kelly, aye. Okay, thank you. Reports for the school committee, Dr. Antonucci.
Yep. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Just a few things, I at first just sort of want to acknowledge or since it's the first time we've had a public meeting that we're, as you all know, I think from our community messaging, that we did go through a bit of a surge, if you will, last week, post winter break with a number of positive COVID cases. And I just, sort of just for more, even more transparency, transparency, just want to show you, just kind of want to show you some data. We'll just kind of catch up to date if that, just bear with me for one, one moment. So, nothing, nothing new here. Bear with me a second, sorry, it's tough to manage and talk at the same time. Yeah, nothing new here, I mean, this chart is something that we update daily at this point, it's posted on the front page of our website, it's pretty, I think people are paying attention to it pretty carefully, and you can see here that after kind of many weeks of of a lull, if you will, in cases, we had this pretty significant spike, sorry, I'm a mess here, spike in cases, the period ending, especially January sixth and in January thirteenth. And this is it, just sort of a kind of more visual representation, clearly, we had a surge or a spike, as it's always described on, on the news, and I just, again, just, we've reported it out pretty, I think, pretty well to the community. I, I'm disappointed by this data, but it really isn't a surprise, especially based on what we learned from contract tracing, kind of family and student behavior over break. I'd say people, generally speaking, got away from the things that were working well in school, you know, mask wearing, limited social gatherings and the such. So, by the middle of last week, we're really seeing the result of that. This chart here is just the number of cases by day, it's just really a week. But you'll see here, starting with this, on January fourth, pretty much every day, we had a series of cases, seven, you know, seven the next day, then it dropped down to four, kind of four every day for the whole week, and it, it's funny, when you see it on a graph like this, it kind of feels kind of benign, but it kind of felt like it was coming fast and furious for us. But really, it's just that things were kind of taking time to report. Every single one of these cases were from winter break. I can't be any more clear about that. And the good news is, and this is why I just wanted to put this one slide up, as of today, we're back to normal. Right, it's kind of a trickle now, we had one case today, since I will have a couple, you know, more here and there. But we think we've risen and we think we've kind of fully declined at this point. And so I just wanted to say that, it kind of felt like a bit of a tsunami last week. But we managed it, our contract tracing was extremely effective. We were able to pinpoint in all cases where it came from, and that's really important. You know, the point of origin is really important, we want to make sure there wasn't community spread. Then we talked to our Board of Health, there's no community spread. So, we're back to where we want it to be, which is kind of a very slow pace, we're going to have cases here and there, as we've had all year, but we think we're past it. So I just kind of want to, as of tonight, show you that, whoo, we can kind of take a deep breath, I think, and continue to move forward. I do think, you know, we need to kind of recommit as a community to, to safer practices and better, kind of better judgment, but hopefully we can avoid, you know, that kind of spike again. Any questions on that?
I mean, I'll just go ahead and make a comment. And I think it's, and I've said this a few times at other meetings, John, you just, you know, recommit as a community, you know, we've got parents heavily pushing to come back into school, yet it's clear that many are not really practicing than our new safety rules in the time of COVID. And I think that is just unfair and irresponsible and disrespectful to other families, our staff, and our broader community. So, for the parents who want to push for full-time back in school, you know, show, you know, we all just need to step up to that and take care of our own families so that we can take care of everybody else. I'm just, I'm so, I'm really, you're putting the school in a really tough position, basically, the families in the community who are not, who are not practicing safe COVID practices. I'm sorry if I'm not very articulate, but I think, I think the message is clear.
Very well said, actually.
I think, you know, Shannon, you know, I agree with that, I would just say, John, my, my concern is, I wouldn't, I don't feel confident that we're back to normal, because, you know, if you look at the, the two holidays that people were highly focused on was Thanksgiving, which was, you know, four or five days. For many of us that have college-age students, they all came home at Thanksgiving. And it looked like it was about a month before there was a significant uptick. We're only, I don't, you know, I can't remember, we're three weeks, maybe, I wouldn't be so quite confident that we've seen the worst of it yet. So, yeah, we also have MLK weekend coming up, that's a three-day weekend, but certainly Thanksgiving and Christmas. I don't think we've fully seen the effect of Christmas and New Years. You know, we're, we're January thirteenth, that's only two weeks from New Years, or three weeks from Christmas. So anyhow, I would just say, yeah, I'm just not so confident that we're back to quote-unquote "normal" pre-holiday.
No, Peter, I didn't mean to imply that it's normal or greater, I think, but that, that particular spike, most of it was a direct result of activity over, in particular, New Year's Eve, you know, when you do the contract tracing. And so that, that was a significant number, especially of high school-age children. So anyway, who knows, right, I don't mean to predict some, you know, they were going to be back to kind of normal, but hopefully we don't see that again, that was really an anomaly so far, at least for the year.
So the contact tracing didn't show a similar uptick related to Thanksgiving gatherings?
We didn't really have, we didn't really have a surge like that after, after Thanksgiving.
Right, so that's interesting.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you're right then, John, and hopefully it is, worse might be behind us.
Yeah, who knows, but anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that, we've been, again, we've been sharing this data, I think, pretty well, but I just, while we're here, I figured I'd share it today, and hopefully there are better times ahead. Just a couple of other things for, for my, my report is that sort of in the news of hopefully there's brighter times ahead, today, we actually, the town of Duxbury actually held a regional COVID vaccine clinic at the high school, middle school complex. That clinic was for first responders. I want to be crystal clear about that, because we've had some questions. It was for, it's for first responders in, in and around the South Shores, a regional clinic. So none of our, none of our, even though we hosted it, none of, no, no school personnel, you know, were part of the, part of that clinic, but it went, it went off without a hitch. It was very well organized. Today, they vaccinated 203 people. And there's a second and third round this coming Saturday and Sunday. So it's a great test run. We are hopeful that, you know, in the next few weeks, month, we can obviously broaden the number of students who are receiving vaccines, including school personnel. School personnel are sort of in the, in the part two, what is it, part two of Phase Two vaccine rollout plan, so that, that could be anywhere from February to April, hopefully more, more towards February. But so time will tell, so anyway, it went really well. Our, our public safety and public health staff did a, did a great job getting this underway. So I think that's a great, that's a great, it's great news, and we're moving, we're moving in a, in a good direction. And then another thing, sort of
John, John, quick question, so school nurses are not considered first responders?
They, they aren't, they are not.
So they'll be part of Phase Two?
Yeah. The, the other thing I want to mention is part of my report, I don't have a lot of information yet on this, but the state last week, if you saw, the governor held a press conference, I believe it was on Thursday, surprised us all, which is very common these days with a governor, he springs a lot of things on us, mostly not good. But he launched a statewide COVID testing program for K to 12 schools. And they had originally, we're going to run this as a pilot. Duxbury was going to be part of that pilot, I was sort of able to get in on that ground. They decided to skip the pilot, which is good news, and go to a full, a full rollout at the state. So in the next few weeks, I think they're going to roll this out, and it's, it's pool testing. And you've heard that term before, but it's basically where they, they test a, a pool of people. I think pools, batches of 20. And the idea is that they're able to really efficiently test that, that batch of 20. And if it comes on negative, that's great news, and you kind of move on. If that batch triggers a positive, then they, they go one step deeper, and they, they test all those individuals in that batch of 20 to, to be able to kind of isolate, isolate the positive. It's a very efficient and effective way of testing. It's really expensive. And to date, it hasn't really been affordable or accessible to most, really, most districts in the Commonwealth. It's going to be free for the first six weeks of testing. We don't know a lot other than what I just told you, we have expressed interest in participating in that program. There was a webinar yesterday, we received a little more information about it, we're meeting internally tomorrow with our, our staff to determine what, who we think we want to test, how we want to roll it out. We don't have a lot of information about cost yet, so after that six weeks, we would have to observe the cost, we need more information on whether that's affordable. I think the testing program might align with a new infusion of stimulus funding. So it's possible that we're able to take that new round of stimulus funding and apply it towards a testing program. So, I think it's really great news. It's a little too early to tell if it's going to be the right fit exactly for Duxbury, I think it's going to be. But I just wanted to alert you that we're, we're exploring it, and there are more, there's more news to come. Katie, anything else I should say about that at this point, I don't know anything else.
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Do we know how many would be able to be tested in the pooling in the free period before it gets shut off?
I don't know that yet. I don't know if it's unlimited staff or students, Katie, do you know that yet?
So I think it would be both staff and students.
How many, like, we don't know, like, how many individuals would be able to be tested in those six weeks during the free period?
So I don't think the state is, the state didn't say that they would be putting a limit on our testing capacity. So I think it's just going to be determined by the district how we want to roll it out, whether we want to roll it out to everyone, or if it's just going to be kind of a set group.
All right, so stay tuned on that, and that's it for me, Kelly?
All right, thank you. Um, Dr. Klingman?
Hello, I have a couple of announcements this evening. On January fifth, Desi released updated information about MCAS testing this year, so I wanted to make sure you were up to speed with that. We found out that there will be modified competency determination for any students who are set to graduate in 2021 and may not have had a passing score on their grade 10 MCAS. We found out there'll be a shortened MCAS testing time for students in grades three through eight, where students will only take a portion of the MCAS assessment in each subject area. They are going to provide relief to schools and districts in terms of accountability, and when they usually give us designations for our MCAS scores and progress. We also found out, which I shared at last month's meeting, that access testing for our English learners will, they'll have an extended window to complete their access testing, which I think extends until May. And we found out that districts will have some flexibility with scheduling their high school biology test. And they said that additional information will be coming out in the next few weeks and months, so I'll be sure to update you on, on what MCAS will look like this year. My next announcement is that Duxbury Public Schools will again be participating in the Seal of Bilinguality designation. And what that is, I explained it a few years back at, at a school committee meeting. It's an award provided by state-approved districts that recognizes high school graduates who have achieved a high functional and academic level in English and a world language. In recognition of having studied that and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. And so what that, what the seal of bilinguality looks like is, it's a seal that appears on the transcript and diploma of a graduating senior for that accomplishment, and they're able to highlight that on resumes and college admissions. So it's a nice thing, we've had a number of students who have participated in this program. I know we have at least one senior this year who has already achieved his seal of bilinguality. So, we need to inform the school district of this on a yearly basis, K through 12, because it's important for this program, for our families of younger students to know that, if they're, if they have a bilingual household, or if they're motivated to have their children really have a world language and achieve at a high level that they can earn that distinction upon graduation. So I'll be sending out some information about that in the principal newsletters, I'll have them put an attachment so that families can see that. And then my last announcement is that Duxbury Middle School will be participating in an all-school read this summer into the fall. This is always fun. And so the book selected was Count Me In by Barsha Bajaj, which I have right here. And it was chosen because of its themes of inclusion, empathy, and acceptance. So this project is being funded through a DEF grant, so we're very grateful that this grant was awarded. And it's going to include a series of activities for the middle school students, as well as a Zoom session with the author. And so the English department right now is considering other ways to involve the greater community with this project, so I just wanted to invite any of you, if you wanted to participate in this all-school read and any of the activities, we can certainly provide you with a copy of the book when we get a little closer to the summer. So that's all from me.
Excellent, I'm definitely going to read it. I like to read what my kids are reading, it's so much fun. Danielle, you had mentioned if families at home are bilingual, but what if it's a language that we don't teach? The distinction is, it's Spanish.
Yep, it doesn't have to be a language that we offer in Duxbury. In fact, we had a family Lithuanian, where Lithuanian was the language spoken in their home. And so, there are some languages where they don't have the same tests available to show this proficiency. So there's other ways to have a portfolio assessment and a different procedure if it's a language that we don't offer in school. But I think we always think it's a great way for our bilingual families to be able to have that distinction, because it's a, it's a blessing in this day and age to be able to speak more than one language. So, if anyone has questions about the seal of bilinguality, Diane Mahegan, who's our world language supervisor, also oversees this program, and she's very knowledgeable about the process. So people can reach out to her directly.
Thank you. All right, awesome, so Director of Business and Finance, Katie Blake?
Hey, everyone, so I have a few updates for you tonight. First, we had originally planned to bring forth a recommendation for our Yellow Bus Bid Award to you tonight. But we did, however, have potential bidders that had asked for an extension to the timeline, which we granted. So we are hosting the bid opening meeting next Wednesday, and we'll be presenting our recommendation to you for the bid award at the next school committee meeting in early February. We were also recently notified that the timeline for the CARES Act funding was extended until the end of this year, 2021. So as you might remember, the original timeline that had been communicated to us since the first phase of this funding was December 30th, 2020. And so that timeline has been pushed out a year. However, we have not been made aware of any additional funding that we could receive during that time period. I know they did mention yesterday at the meeting that I attended about the pool testing, that they are looking at additional funding, and they had made mention of numbers as great as four times the amount that we had originally received. So as I receive any updates with those funding numbers, I'll continue to pass along any updates to the committee. I also wanted to bring to your attention that we've had several warrants that have been processed since the adoption of our revised signature policy. And so we've processed three warrants. It was warrant 24, that was processed on December 11th, and that was in the amount of $500,001.91. We also processed warrant 26 on December 25th, and that was in the amount of $403,118.22. And then the last warrant process was warrant 28 on January 8th, and that was $287,795,000, dollars, I'm sorry, and 12 cents. So I'll continue to keep you updated on those warrants as we go through and process them.
Great, thank you. All right, for me, I just had, well, just to remind everybody that Friday closes Term Two, and when we come back next week, we are halfway through the year, right? So, believe it or not. And then for the members, I just wanted to remind everybody, Murphy Lamar sent us information about the new sexual harassment, civil rights harassment policy, and they sent, which I printed, it's an awesome color-coded chart, just about what happens when a complaint is received. So I just would encourage everybody to, to print it and put it somewhere, because it's really, I was impressed with it, it's very well laid out. That's all I have, does anybody else have anything they want to say right now? Nope, okay. Then we will go to the FY22 budget hearing.
Yeah, so the, thanks, Kelly, the, the Mass General Law requires school districts to, once a year, officially post a budget hearing. It's, it's kind of an old, old law, but still in the books, and requires us to post it in advance and then have a kind of public hearing. We do that anyway, just by the nature of our, how our agendas are posted, and we kind of have usually several budget, you know, public budget meetings. But tonight is sort of the technical budget hearing, and it, I don't want to minimize it, but it's, we're, we're trying to do that to comply, comply with the law. But it's also a time to kind of have one final conversation about it, and then I'm going to ask you later to actually vote on the FY22 operating budget and the FY22 capital budget. So, I think what I'll do is just, I'm just going to show you two slides, one slide maybe. And then Madam Chair, we, we should, since it's a hearing, I think we should turn to the audience to see if there's any questions, okay?
To the public audience?
Yeah, just because it is, it is technically a hearing, if that's okay?
Perfect.
Just specifically related to the, the budget, so let me share my screen. So literally one, one slide, and I just want to, I want to talk, show you what this is. So, if you remember, when we presented our budget back on, I think it was November 4th, maybe, you know, we, we had been tasked with, by the town, to develop, to develop a budget with a 0% increase year over year. And very challenging exercise, and if you recall, you know, that, that exercise led to a potential reduction of staff of 18.6 FTE, full-time equivalent personnel. Very draconian budget cuts, you know, program reductions, class size increases, right on down the line. The, we always start the year by developing what's called a Level Services Budget, and that's actually the chart on the bottom. And Level Services Budget is the amount of money we need next year, in theory, to provide the same level of services that we're providing this year. And inevitably, that, that's going to show a significant increase year over year, somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% or 4%, sometimes higher, depending on some variability and things like special education and the like. So this year, our Level Service Budget, when we developed that, that showed a $1,050,000 increase from FY21 to FY22. Most of that increase is due to salary increases, most of our employees, over 80% are in collective bargaining agreements. So there's naturally, we have cost of living, as well as step and lane increases that, that get factored in. We have some special ed increases, and then we have some other small, those are, those are out-of-district tuition increases, and some transportation increases. And so every year we do this, this year, we kind of spit that number out, and it was a 2.8% increase, again, year over year. So when we were tasked with developing that 0% budget, that's where we started. So we said, we know we need $1,050,000 to start the year, to get to zero. We need to make a certain level of cuts, and again, that was the 18.6 FTE staff reduction. The great news has been, we've had, since then, we've had so finance committee, several finance committee conversations. We've had some, a lot of internal conversations with our town finance director and town manager. And you all have been there, and there is a clear, I think, consensus by our finance committee and our Board of Selectmen and our town administration that schools must be a top priority as we look towards funding the FY22 budget. And there's no appetite whatsoever to allow us to make these draconian reductions. So it, it's, we're still in the middle of a process, the budget process won't end until town meeting, which is the second Saturday in March. So we're kind of in the middle of the process here. I am going to ask you to vote the budget tonight, and I'm going to ask you to vote the Level Services Budget. Okay, the, the number down the bottom there. I'm not certain that we will ultimately end up with that Level Service Budget. I hope we do, I hope it's more. And if it's less, I think it'll be marginally less. If you read in the newspaper last week, the town manager presented a budget to the Board of Selectmen, and the, the number that he allocated to the schools was $1 million, Katie, it was $1 million even, is that correct?
Correct.
So, so it's close, right, so it's $50,000 at this point, less than our Level Services Budget. So, things are looking much more positive than they were looking early November. And again, I can't guarantee that when the process ends, we'll end up with a Level Services Budget, right? But I think there is consensus that Level Service should be something that we're all striving towards. So I am going to recommend that you, you take that vote tonight. And so that's, that's really the whole story for right now. Any questions on that?
So the budget number, just to confirm, the budget number we'll be voting on is the $38,549,268, right?
Correct, correct. And to reiterate, it is, it is, it's part of the process, so I present my superintendent's budget. A lot of work that happens behind the scenes with the town, school committee will vote a budget. But then, you know, from here on in to town meeting, there's still a lot of analysis and negotiation and, and just trying to plug the holes, quite frankly, because it's still not an easy year for everybody. But the, the discussions have been very positive, and I really, I really appreciate it, and and, you know, we'll see what happens.
So are, does this mean that there will be only the one FTE reduction that was in the Level Services calculation from your previous presentation?
Right, right, exactly, I forget, I think there's 1.3 maybe, yeah. Yeah, but, and that was, that was an enrollment-driven, and I think a vacant position. Right, Katie?
Correct, yep, it's one point three.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, of course, we don't get the fifty thousand, which I'm confident, hopeful that we will. But I think it's our responsibility to vote in the whole level service budget.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I think I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be asking you to do it if I didn't feel that there was legitimate, kind of, I would say, desire even on the part of our town officials and Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen to try to get us to that level, right? I mean, I think there was a sincere effort, there is a sincere effort that's happening right now to get us there. Again, maybe we get there, maybe we don't, but I think it's important. If we need to revote before town meeting, we'll revoke. You know, we're not, this is not cast in stone.
Any other school committee comments before we go public?
Kelly, one more thing for me, if you don't mind. I just also, we're going to ask you tonight to vote the capital budget, which, which Katie Blake did a great job way back in October, maybe, presenting. It's a very, it's not a small dollar necessarily, but it's five, five, five specific requests this year that we're asking for. Katie and I actually went to the last week, Katie, we went to a fiscal advisory meeting, and they oversee capital. And so Katie and I made a presentation to that board last week. Again, I can't necessarily say that this will all get funded this year. But I think the presentation was very well received. So I'll be asking you tonight to vote this number, five hundred twelve thousand eight forty-three on the capital budget. And I'm going to stop sharing for a moment. And that, that's, that's, that's the story.
Okay, great.
Can I jump in? Or a comment, I guess?
Yeah.
So, you know, just that example there, like, you know, five hundred and twelve thousand of capital. John, not that it's assured or guaranteed, but I just think our overall town finances are not lined up with what the priorities of the community. It just seems, year after year, we have a surplus of resources available for capital projects, including free cash. There's always substantially more for the ten years I've been paying close attention. And it often results in a spending spree. Honestly, honestly, I'm not really a fan of spending hundred and fifty thousand per year for years when we're, when we're really under-resourcing our teachers and under-resourcing our classroom, and our class sizes are going up and our standardized test scores are going down. But because it's easy for the town to just say, oh, well, we have a lot more free cash this year, so we can spend money on capital projects is just backwards. And I just think that's a reflection. If in a year that there's a budget crisis, we're able to find five hundred and twelve thousand for capital, and I'm not saying that's what's going to be the final number. But after a year where we had a one point six percent budget increase to go to a level service when our kids have been harmed since last March, this is not a case, like, our, our students were impacted starting in March. All of the other town departments were fully funded through the fiscal year. Our students and our families had real consequences starting in March. So I just think this, the whole way in which, and I know people think and talk, and you know, there are a lot of buzzwords around free cash is not free and it's not cash, and that seems to be a mantra which is accepted here. But this just to me is just further indication that the town has not got this right, when thinking about the priorities. You know, so to have a beautiful turf field and then have class sizes that are substantially above average. It's just, you know, it's misguided. So anyhow, that comment, no question, but you know, that on top of years and years and years of operational underfunding of our schools, you know, it just, it makes my head spin.
Well, Peter Quigley for Finance Committee. I mean, yeah, it's a thankless job. It, but that is our reality. So you know, we're happy to get what we have covered under capital. All the projects that we need to do or machinery that needs to be purchased, but I fully appreciate what you're saying, Peter.
Madam Chair, there's a couple of hands raised. Do you want me to?
Ding dong, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's only a first name, but Catherine has their hand raised. Catherine? Hi Catherine, you're muted. Do you have a question about the budget? Or comment? Okay, I'm going to put, I'll put her back, and we'll try to keep an eye on her. The next one is Carrie Carrie Safran. Hello, Miss Safran?
You gotta unmute Carrie.
Sorry, that was a total mistake on my part, guys.
Okay, so you're, so I'm going to put you back, okay. Let me, I'm just going to try to bring this other one back in. Hi Catherine, you're back. If you have a comment or a question? You're on mute. Okay. All right, moving on, I think. Well, you're muted, Kelly.
Thank you. I'm watching everybody else be muted. We're going to jump to the first reading of the proposed new policies, one for educational opportunities for military children and one for opportunities for children in foster care. So I think Danielle, are you going to do the, okay?
So I wanted to share that as part of our tiered focus monitoring reviews or audits by the state that we go through every few years. Massachusetts school districts are required to have formal policies and procedures in place and have them documented about how we're addressing educational stability as it relates to our most at-risk student groups, which they've identified as foster care, homeless, or students in military families. Military families may be facing frequent school interruptions or changes in school districts. So in tonight's school committee folder, I've included two new policies for your consideration, which were adapted from the Massachusetts School Committee policies, MASC. We already have a district policy that addresses homeless students and families, and tonight we're proposing adding a policy for students in foster care and in military families. These policies are similar in that they both address things such as registration, transportation, access to programs and activities. And also that we are required to have best interest determination meetings with other school districts, either the sending district or us as a receiving district, to determine if it makes the most sense for students to attend Duxbury Public Schools or for them to remain in their previously attended school districts. And so these would be under the similar heading that our current homeless policy is. And I'm glad to answer any questions you might have about these, or otherwise it will be a first read tonight. And we can talk about this at our next meeting.
Anybody have questions tonight?
You know, Danielle and John, this is kind of before your time, but there was a a family that was, was, and again, it sounds academic, but it turned out it was impactful for this family. It was a family member of a Duxbury student who was graduating from a military academy and was going to be deployed, and I think it was West Point, I can't remember. The school did not permit an excused absence for that student to attend the graduation of their sibling. So I would just like to say, out of respect, this goes back five years, I would say. But just out of respect for the, you know, kind of the pain, in my mind, needlessly that family was caused. I would like to recommend that we put that in our policy, not that we have an extensive number of families that that would impact. It just seemed that was a case where the school aligned, and the family didn't understand, and it didn't really make sense. So anyhow, I just make a recommendation. Not a big deal, but I think in that family's case, it turned out to be quite a big deal.
Absolutely. We can, I can add some language about that specific scenario to the current proposed policy.
Danielle, so Peter, I'll confirm, but it's ringing a bell, but I think that's already been addressed, and it's been added to the high school handbook. I'll double-check with Jim Donovan, if that's the case. But I've heard that story, and I believe there's, I believe they resolved it after that, so.
Excellent, great, thank you.
Great. Okay, we are going to move on to our discussion regarding increasing in-person learning at the elementary level.
Before we do that?
What's that?
No, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I was on mute, but so just in the same spirit of moving Danielle's policy up, do you want to have Katie do the corolla report?
Yes, I was thinking that, yeah, Katie should do the report, and then we'll do the presentation.
Yeah, Katie, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Do you mind jumping?
All right, all yours, Katie.
No, that's fine. So I actually have, I don't know if I can share my screen.
Should be able to, yeah.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
So I just have, I just wanted to talk through, so I provided the second quarter financial update for fiscal year twenty-one. I provided a memo with some information specific to our salary expenditures and also our general expenses. Both the expenditures and the encumbrances that we currently have. So that documentation was put in the school committee folder, and then I also provided some information on the CARES Act funding that we received and the corresponding expenditures that we've had for this fiscal year. And I provided a breakdown just at some very high-level categories, so you should have that as well. So in this presentation, I just wanted to kind of speak to a few different areas that I was seeing. So with the salary expenditures, overall, our salary budget is tracking just slightly under expected. And that is due to several reasons, including some of our employees working modified schedules. So because of the hybrid, our hybrid model, we do have a number of employees that are working a modified schedule. And when I say modified schedule, when we had originally created the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, we created the budget that was reflective of a more typical schedule with the students in person, five days a week. We also had a number of positions that were unfilled for both a short and an extended period of time during the reporting period, so during the first and second quarter of this fiscal year. So that certainly had some implications that were reflected in our expenditures for the first and second quarter. And then we also are seeing a reduction in the number of our stipend payments that we'll be making certainly over first and second quarter, but I do anticipate that we'll have a reduction in those payments for third and fourth quarter as well. And that's just simply due to the fact that we may not be offering the typical number of co-curricular activities to our students. And so we'll have a corresponding reduction in the stipend payments that are made. So looking forward for the third and fourth quarter of this fiscal year, in the absence of any additional state or federal funding, I do anticipate that some of the salary expenses that we've incurred in the first several months of the school year will need to be reassigned to the operating budget. So we did have a number of personnel and their salaries that we were able to cover using CARES Act funding. And of course, at this point, although the CARES Act deadline was extended, we haven't been allocated additional funds. So those salaries, we're hoping to certainly retain those employees, and those salaries will be covered by our operating budget. I just wanted to mention here, any changes to the district's operating model, so just given the example of in-person, full-in-person hybrid or remote learning model can absolutely have an impact to our salary expenses moving forward. So that's always going to be a consideration as we're looking at the model for third and fourth quarter. And also, any updated guidance provided by the state could potentially have an impact on our salary expenses moving forward. So as the state rolls out their guidelines, they have certainly made recommendations on staffing levels. One of the examples I can think of is they made some recommendations for transportation staffing levels, and then absolutely will have implications for our salary expenses and our general expenses too, moving forward for the next few quarters. And so as we look at our general expenses, we have a few, just a few points that I really wanted to bring up as we've kind of gone through the first two quarters, and then again, looking forward to third and fourth quarter of this year, our general expense budget is tracking slightly under, and it's, that's also due to several reasons. We were seeing a reduction in the use of some of our contracted services vendors. So the biggest example for that is our transportation vendor. So typically, in previous school years, we utilized twenty-one yellow buses to transport our students. And that transportation obviously is offered five days a week. And due to the hybrid model and the schedule for this year, and also taking into account all of the guidelines that were put forth, we were able to reduce the buses from twenty-one buses to fourteen buses, and that was due to the scheduling. We also had a slightly different process in place this year where we did ask all families to register for transportation. So that really enabled us to be able to to determine the number of buses based off of the students that we knew that were going to be participating in the program and actually riding on a daily basis. We're also seeing some transportation shifts for our expenses in our, with our vendors that transport our students out of district. So similar to our district here, some of the out-of-district students are attending school, a modified schedule. So there are certain days of the week, or there are certain weeks where they are remote, and they are not being transported to school. So we're we're seeing that savings in our general expense budget. We did have a, a small, or actually, a pretty significant savings in our out-of-district tuition for our vocational students. So South Shore Vo-Tec did not accept any new out-of-district students. So obviously, Duxbury is not considered in district for South Shore Vo-Tec. And we're paying those tuition payments from the operating budget. And for this year, even though we had a number of students that had initially expressed interest in attending South Shore Vo-Tec, they did not accept any new students. So we are seeing a savings in both the salary and the transportation from what we had originally projected that budget to be. And not necessarily tied to less expenses, but certainly the utilization of some of our outside funding sources has helped to cover expenses that would have typically been seen in our operating budget. So we have spent over one point two million dollars in our CARES Act funding. We were also allocated seventy-five thousand dollars for technology expenses as a state earmark. And we've received some additional state grant funding. So we've been able to allocate expenses to that funding, and we haven't had to necessarily use our operating budget to pay for those expenses so far this fiscal year. That being said, in the absence of any additional state or federal funding, some of these COVID-related expenses will have to be paid for from the operating budget. And just an example of those would be the storage containers that we have, any of the air quality testing that we do from now until the end of the year, cost of our outdoor learning areas, which are the tents that we had at each one of the buildings. And that cost would be if we did have that, those spaces set up for the spring, and there's other costs as well. And as I had said, for our salary expenses, very similar with our general expenses, any changes to the district's operating model will have an impact to our general expenses moving forward. So we're carefully monitoring that. And again, any updates to the guidance that we receive could impact our general expenses moving forward as well. So if we're told that we have to, you know, some of the ways to mitigate the spread of the, the virus would be if we had to have any type of additional equipment or additional resources that we would certainly have to, in the absence of any additional funding, pay for that from our operating budget. So we're, we're paying close attention to that. And we're still carefully monitoring any of our typical general expenses that we see from year to the, year to year, whether it be any new out-of-district expenses, any new or unexpected maintenance expenses, any new regulations that we see that may not be tied to the pandemic, but certainly something that we would have to fund during the course of the, the fiscal year. We're keeping an eye on those and all of those, all of those areas will certainly have an impact on the end of the year balance. I think that's it. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions about the report or about any of the bullet points that I put forth on the, on the screen.
Just one general question. And John, I don't know if you know, the kids who were planning to go to South Shore Votech, are they in district or did they find somewhere else to go? Or do we not know? Just curious.
So I don't know. I'm not sure if I believe that they're in district, but I'm not 100% positive.
Same. That's, that's what I would say too.
Yeah. All right. Just hopefully they can get in next year. Okay.
I, I had a question. Now Katie, two questions. First is, is the, is this the second round of CARES Act? I forget what it's called. That was passed into law. Is that being administered via county like the first one was? So Plymouth County will be responsible for determining which town gets what?
So I, I don't know. I'm not 100% positive. So I know, I think it was maybe it was certainly unusual that Plymouth County requested the funds separately, the first round. So I'm not sure if it's going to be the same for the second. I have not heard.
Okay. Then second, Katie, this is a question for both you and John. Is there any precedent for, and again, we're not in a position, and this is not a leading question by any means. I'm just wondering, has, have, have school districts ever returned money to the town prior to the end of the, the school year? Meaning if we, you know, have surplus funds available and we return them to the town, they don't benefit at least for a year later. Has that ever been done, John? Is any school district ever, when they recognized there was going to be a surplus, turned it back, say in March versus in June?
Yeah, I, I've, I have no, sure enough is I have no idea, but I've never heard, I've never heard of such a thing. But that's, but I don't know.
Well, so you know, again, this is a once in a hundred year event. And you know, when you think about any identification early of a potential surplus that could come prior to town meeting could impact us positively next year. Well, just don't want to belabor the thought. I just, I realized, you know, by the time you get to the year end, if we do have a surplus, you know, it doesn't affect our budget until 23, right? And we're really looking for what can we do to shore up our budget in '22.
Well, yeah. So I do think though, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think we have discussed some, at some point during this budget season, that, you know, we're pretty confident that we would, we would have money left over. And so we sort of suggested to them that they, they might want to plan for that. You know, whether it's more going into this bed stabilization or whether it's not putting any of the stabilization and freeing that up for, you know, to fund operating budgets, that has certainly been discussed, to your point. So we have signaled to them that they, that there will be potentially more money than normal. Correct, Katie?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's a good point, Peter. We'll, we'll reaffirm, we'll, we'll confirm.
Yeah. You see my point on timing. And again, I'm not thinking about, this isn't, like, is it legal as an example? Like, could we choose to forego budgeted approved funds? And again, I don't want to take us off track, but just put that in the back of your mind and, and, and see if you can run, you know, just, just kick that around.
Yep. Okay. I get your point. Great.
Going back to the vocational school topic, at, at one point, we were talking to the superintendent of the South Shore Vocational Technical School about becoming a member. Have we had any progress in those discussions?
No, we, we haven't. We were sort of lined up to do that before the pandemic and then we, we just haven't, we just haven't gotten back to that. So we can certainly look into that. We did, we did, we were provided at the time, some, some analysis on, you know, potential cost savings. And I was pretty underwhelmed by it. So it sort of took the wind out of my sails a little bit to pursue it aggressively. I still, I still think there's, there's room for a conversation. It's just that obviously we've been focused on, on other things this year. So we, we'll get back at that at some point.
Yeah. I think my thinking is that if, if South Shore Vocational Technical is not accepting students who are not in their district or in their, a member, then if we don't become a member, we close off an option for Duxbury students that they might otherwise have. So maybe the savings isn't the only thing we need to think about, that we also need to think about access, providing access for our students.
Yeah, I totally agree. Yeah, I totally agree with you. I just, I, I think that, that this was a pause this year. I'm not exactly sure if it was just pandemic related, but it certainly took us by surprise when they didn't, when they didn't take any students. So we'll, we'll definitely follow up with them. It's a good point. Because we think it's a great option for, for a great number of students. So.
Yeah. I mean, my recollection was that originally we had seven students who were attending and then we had a dozen who wanted to attend something on the, so, you know, there is demand. And I think if we can somehow create a path for them, that would be great.
Totally agree. Cause they're kind of the only game in town for a lot of vocational purposes. Can Duxbury kids go, I don't want to get off track on this, but can Duxbury kids go to like Plymouth North? I know they have, they can't, right? They have like a beauty center and that would be like a school choice thing, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Katie or anybody? All right. Moving right along to the main feature. Let's talk about increasing in-person learning at the elementary level.
Yeah. So, so Danielle, then Danielle and I are going to kick this off and then pretty quickly turn it over to Erin Weisahan and Chase Shazier, the principal of Chandler and Alden respectively. So with that being said, I'll just get, get rolling. So we are tonight putting on the table a proposal to return our students to grade K to five to a four-day in-person, in-person return, in-person learning model beginning Monday, February 1st. That date, we've talked about that date for at least, at least a couple of months now. As far back as October, we had put on the table a kind of mid, mid-January return. For obvious reasons, it didn't, we, we didn't, it wasn't the right timing. And so, but February 1st, we have been talking and I, I say that, I, I want to say that because we have had some feedback that it's sort of this like rush, hurry to, to, to get kids back to school. And I just, I would argue, it just couldn't even be, the opposite is true. In fact, we've, we've talked about this date extensively and it should not be a surprise to people. So it feels like a, if it feels like a rush, it's just simply, just simply not factual. I think the fair question though, for the community, because I have been, haven't been reluctant to discuss it, but we, it just really hasn't been the right timing. So the question is, why now? And I'd say here, as a bullet says, that we're in a very different place than we were two or three months ago. You know, the, the first kind of push from people, at least who expressed a desire to come back, it was really premature, but it was in middle of October. And we were nowhere near ready to have that discussion in October. We hadn't, we just hadn't had enough experience in our hybrid learning model. We hadn't had enough experience with the virus, had not, had enough experience with our protocols to even think about the next steps. Well, we certainly thought about it, but we weren't, weren't ready to really recommend an implementation of a plan. That being said, we're in a different place now. Our hybrid model has been very effective. We know that. But I'm going to reiterate what I said multiple times this year. There is simply no replacement for in-person learning, period. No matter how good of a job we're doing. And we know in particular that our youngest learners, having them at home, learning remotely three days a week is just simply not ideal. We know kids are struggling. We know families are struggling. And you know, we had hoped early in the year that by February, we'd be in a much different place in that we'd all be sort of coming back, but that, that hasn't happened. And so in the absence of any kind of new trends or any new scenarios, I, I just felt there was a coming upon us to make a move. I mean, it's, it's as simple as that. We also know by now that our safety protocols in school have been very effective. You know, the fears about in-school transmission of the virus and in-school spread, they've just simply proven to be unfounded. You know, and we didn't know that in September. We didn't know that in October, but we know that in January. And so that contributes to the why now. And I think really importantly, this final point, we've shown that we cannot control what happens outside of school. We can't control the decisions that families are making, that students are making, that staff is making outside of school, but we can control what happens in our school buildings every day. And schools, in my opinion, are by far the safest buildings in the country right now. The safety protocols that we have in place, the mask wearing, the social distancing, the commitment to hand washing, commitment to smaller group gatherings, it has worked. And so I feel comfortable putting this on the table now, much more than I, than I would have in October or, or even November. So that's sort of the why now. I, I, I don't want to overdramatize what I'm saying, but we're nearing a crisis situation with our youngest learners. They've been out of school almost a year. And so I, I just think, I don't think there's a right decision. I know it's a, it's a conversation about balance, balanced risk, but I think it's time to have a very serious conversation about making that next move. And by the way, we wouldn't be the first people to make that move. There are districts that are near, nearby neighboring districts actually that have been back fully in person. So this is not some novel idea I'm putting on the table. I just don't think Duxbury was ready. I, I think we're ready now. So that being said, sort of just not to be redundant, but with more students in the building, we are, we are compromising our social distancing guidelines. We cannot commit anymore to six feet. We will commit to three to six feet, which is the, has been the state guideline from the very beginning. And that's, that's just a fact. We're, we're better off in some classrooms than other classrooms, but we cannot commit to six feet with the implementation of this plan. There will be some instances where it is, where it is three feet, still fully masked and still with a lot of changes to behavior and, and changes of kind of infrastructure in the classroom, but kids will be sitting closer together. And that does have implications. And we'll talk more about that. And the, and the bottom line for me is that when we're faced with two choices, and those two choices, choices, I mean, bringing more kids back in person or staying in our current model, when we're faced with two choices that have, that both have pros and cons, I am always unapologetically going to land on the side of doing what I think is best for kids. And right now I think it's best for kids that we make a move towards a full in-person return. So that's kind of where I am tonight. I, I, I know it's anxiety inducing for a lot of people. I can't say for certain that it's the right thing. There's no such thing anymore as the right decision. There just isn't. We're, we're, we're still in these, in this gray area. We're still learning how to deal with this pandemic. But I feel very comfortable making this decision. I think it's the right time to move forward. And so we, we are going to ask you to entertain kind of a plan tonight that we'll lay out in more detail. And I'm going to turn it over to Danielle now for another piece of this, this puzzle here.
Okay. Thank you, John. I just wanted to share that back on December 18th, DESI released revised regulations around student learning time. And they, I'm calling it SLT. And so what those regulations demanded of districts is that we come up with a plan to have a minimum of 35 hours of live or synchronous instruction for students over a 10-day school period. Also, students must have an opportunity to have a live interaction with their teachers every day. Districts are no longer able to count optional office hour as a live or synchronous instruction opportunity. And they also said that districts that don't meet these minimal requirements as of January 19th will be required to make up these hours at the end of the school year. And so those, that came out right before we left for vacation break. And it really left us with two choices for our K to five programs. Did we think that we would want to switch to, or would be the best choice of students to switch to a live synchronous instruction in our current hybrid model for the entire school day? And what that would look like would be the current model that we're in and the students at home that have been logging in two times per day at the elementary level, if they're in cohorts A or B, they've been logging in for a morning meeting or an afternoon wrap-up. And the rest of the time, they've been working on their home learning plan for the day. What that, what a change to that would look like would be our elementary students would be experiencing what we've seen more so at the secondary level, where they're sitting in front of their computer all day, waiting for the next time that they need to be logged in for their teacher to be giving live instruction. So that would be a lot more screen time for our students. And it's in, as we know, when you're talking about students that are ages five and up, sitting in front of the screen for that long, we, we just aren't sure that that's realistic or reasonable for anyone. Our other choice would be to move into an in-person model with increased learning time, which was presented back in the summertime with, as our, our full-in-person return with some modifications this year, because we would need to continue with Wednesdays to have co-planning time for our teachers to make sure that all of our teachers are teaching in lockstep and that we can ensure that the pacing of all classrooms, including our cohort C students, is happening with consistency. We also have special education planning that we need to have take place on those days and just a number of other situations that we need to have time for. And so we, we had these two options and we, we looked at them. And as educators, it's hard to say that a synchronous schedule for our youngest learners, where they're still at, only in school two days per week and the other three days they're at home and logging in to, on their computer to be able to be virtually with their classmates for an entire school day. We just didn't feel that as though that is the, the best choice for our, for our youngest learners. And so that's why we're here this evening to talk about and present the details of a four-day in-person return. And again, as John stated, these decisions, there's not a decision that we're making that we can say with all certainty, it's the right decision because we're, we're, we're just operating in gray area. And so we know that with every decision we made, there will be some people that agree and some that disagree. But again, we're hoping to move forward and, and what we do know is that students do better with the structure and the consistency of being in school with their teacher as, as much as possible this year in this unusual circumstance. With the structure and the consistency of being in school with their teacher as, as much as possible this year in this unusual circumstance that we find ourselves in. And so I'm going to move on and I believe Mrs. Weisahan will be talking about some details for what this would look like at Chandler School.
All right, before we do that, can we take a timeout for a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure.
Already? Okay, John, I had a question. You mentioned a couple of other districts have gone full-time. Do we know how it's going for them? Or how long it's been?
The most extensive, the most extensive conversation I've had is just randomly was, is with Hanover and they've been back for a while. And I mean, it's going fine. You know, I mean, and having had extensive conversations. With Pembroke, but I know they're back. Here's the thing, I, I just want to be clear about it though. One of, one of the things that we've been reluctant to do is, is move back because we cannot meet the six-foot social distancing guideline. And I, I can't speak to other districts. I have no idea really the, the kind of actual space they're dealing with, but. Districts that have gone back to an in-person model, they, they have a little, they have a little more space than, than what we're talking about with some of our classrooms. So again, I just, it's anecdotal at best. I don't have a lot of details about it, but Hanover and Pembroke, I believe are the other, the two right nearby. And certainly some up in greater Boston that I don't, don't necessarily need to speak to, but. Danielle, any, is that accurate?
And I would just add that any school district that we speak to is experiencing, experiencing the same challenges and concerns from their families. And from their staff members in terms of distancing between desks, being able to maintain six feet when we know at the elementary level. That to provide solid instruction, we can't have our educators be six feet away from a student. So the same issues that we are facing, they're facing as well. And I don't think there's one district that we've heard from across the Commonwealth. That are, that is saying that things are going great this year. I think every community is facing different challenges. And whether the elementary students have already been back with more frequency or whether or not they're fully remote, all districts are facing the same. Challenges this year. So we're all, we're all in the same boat together.
It's all over the map. I mean, there are some districts that maybe up until a week ago hadn't done any, any synchronous learning, even at the secondary level. I mean, it's just, it's all over the map.
Right.
So. Could I just follow up Kelly, that question? So you know, I've had many people ask me, well, what's changed? And you know, obviously this is a complete change. If the state is mandating. Effective December 18th, that's only, you know, less than a month ago. They've told every district in the Commonwealth, they have to meet these requirements or the consequences, you have to have a longer school year. So I wouldn't rule that out as a alternative, but I just wanted, oh. Okay, now I'm not muted. Good, you could hear me. I'm sorry about that. Um, so that's the first thing. That is a new paradigm that we have to operate given the state guidance. Can you confirm our. Secondary, middle school and high school. Under the current hybrid meets the required thirty-five hours of live or synchronous over a ten-day period?
Yes, we can. We're, we're meeting the requirement at the secondary level, but what would need to change at the secondary level is. The office hours might need to be rebranded and not optional. So that students should have access on a daily basis to instruction by their teachers. And so I anticipate that we'll be having some conversations and I know they already have started at secondary about what Wednesday office hours would look like as a point of contact. And same at the elementary level, no matter what decision we make, Wednesdays will need to have some live instruction contact with, with teachers. So Peter, I just want to say on December 18th, DESI released these revised regulations, but districts are expected to act on these by January 19th, which is next Tuesday. What we'll need to do is resubmit what we're providing students in Duxbury to DESI. And so I filled out a survey in the fall that explained how many hours of live. In-person instruction our students were getting and how many hours of asynchronous instruction and what days of the week all of this was occurring on. So I'll have to resubmit what our plan will be as we head into this next phase.
Okay, but it's just important, you know, this is one of the things, you want to have autonomy. But we're subject to both federal and state guidelines. And this is an entirely new guideline. I wasn't aware of it until now. We have to respond to this guidance and we're obviously not going to be doing anything by January 19th. That's in, you know, less than a week. So, so, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Kelly, can I? Make a few comments?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think the other thing that's changed is that the numbers are through the roof. And I think we have to acknowledge that. And I agree, there's been no in-school transmission until now, but that's because we've been keeping the six feet. And you're going to go down to three feet, which is the state guidance, but it's not the CDC guidance. So I'm, I'm just, I am, I do not think it's the right timing. I agree it's the best for the kids. I want to do it. But I, I do not agree with the timing right now with February 1st. I think we should wait until the surge passes. I also, you know, best for the kids. We have other people to worry about. We have teachers and staff that we need to worry about. And I'm a little bit surprised that that's not addressed here. So that's food for thought for me. Thank you.
Can, can I just say something really quick? This is man. I, I was. I'm intentionally not saying anything because I just have it in my mind. I, I was hoping to go through the whole presentation to just sort of compile my thoughts and stuff. And I just wonder if it might be more effective, Kelly, if we sort of let John and Danielle. Lay out the plan and then, because I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of what I'm hearing yet, but I want to sort of hear more. And I, I have a, I'm afraid that if we sort of continue to, to kind of put our thoughts in before John and Danielle are able to give us their whole presentation. Then we may, we may miss some opportunity to come to a shared understanding of what's going on. That, I just want to give my two cents on how.
Thank you.
On now, Matt, I just, I wanted to, to address the question about the other schools before we got into the rest of the conversation. So. Moving right along.
All right, Erin, are you ready? I am. So I'm going to begin by describing some of the details of the Chandler Plan. So the basics of the plan would have students in school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. And as Dr. Klingman said, we would maintain Wednesdays as a fully remote day. And we would add a whole class meeting on that Wednesday as well. As we've talked about this year a number of times already, bringing all the students back does pose some challenges for us. So for the past week, we've been working on solutions, the past number of weeks, excuse me, we've been working on some solutions. So first, up to this point, we have been able to maintain the six feet. Between desks and also between floor spots. So you might know at Chandler, a lot of times our instruction is delivered from floor spots and kids are sitting six feet apart from each other on the floor. So this allows kids to move from their, their desk chair to the floor. So bringing all kids into the classroom at the same time would inevitably, inevitably decrease this distance. As we've mentioned, so our classrooms are all different sizes at Chandler. Depending on the size of the classroom and the number of students, there would be a range of distance between three to six feet. In the classroom pictures on this slide, you can see two different scenarios. The top one is one of our smaller classrooms in the older part of the building. And this particular classroom would have potentially twenty-one students in it. The distance between the desks in this classroom in this picture is between three to four feet. In the classroom picture on the bottom, it happens to be one of our larger classrooms. And in this particular classroom, there are only fifteen in-person students in the class. So that particular classroom does allow for six feet of distance between desks. So even though we can be masked in the classroom for learning at less than six feet. We obviously can't eat with less than six feet without masks. So given all of these different scenarios, we really had to examine each classroom space based on the number of students to determine. Where we could eat and if the classroom was a viable option. So Mrs. McNeil and I went around and we actually surveyed all of the teachers and then visited each classroom to assist with furniture placement. And figuring out if eating was possible inside the classroom. And then we had to figure out what additional furniture needs. In each classroom or additional plexiglass and if anything needed to be removed with adding additional desks. So if students can't fit into the classroom to eat, we've identified a number of other areas for lunch. And can you go to the next slide? Sorry, it's hard to get arrow. So our plan for lunch will absolutely look different than we're used to, even what we're used to right now. So as I said, many students can't fit into the classroom for eating. So we had to really think creatively about other spaces. The main constraint for us is that we don't have the ability to split up our classes. Because that would require additional supervision, which means additional personnel. So. Get, so we need to keep classes as a unit together to eat in one space so that we can keep the recess assistant that works at that class with the class. Given the current cafeteria tables we have, we will be able to fit two classes in the cafeteria at a time. We have twelve-foot tables. We can fit two students per table. And they all have to face the same way. We, we can set up eight tables on either side of the cafeteria with a divider in the middle. And you can see in this picture that students will be sitting six feet apart. So essentially we're using. Each end of the table and the students are just sitting on one side of the bench with the other side of the table benches flipped up. So students can't sit there. In addition, we will be able to use the music room and the art room. There is not enough furniture in either of these rooms to have all students at a seat. So some students will either have to sit on yoga mats or towels brought in from home to eat their lunch. I also have to thank the Magic Dragon and Extended Day staff because we have worked with them and we'll be able to use some of their space during some of our lunch periods. For students to eat. And again, some of these spaces have furniture and some do not. So in the survey that I sent out at the beginning of January, which I'll talk more about in a minute. We asked families if they would be willing to support a picnic-style lunch for their classroom, for their child, excuse me. And this means, as I said, students would be eating on the floor with a yoga mat or a towel brought in from home. And as you can see, ninety-three percent of families said yes, they would be comfortable with that. So that would have to be the situation for some of our classes. In addition, classes are either going to have to leave the classroom for snack or have students eat on a rotating basis within the classroom. In spots that are six feet away from others. So one of the, one of the changes that we're going to have to ask from families is that. To please help us by sending in a snack that is compact, easy to eat, quick. You know, anything with a spoon or a straw or something that's possibly messy should really be avoided. This is just going to make a huge difference for teachers who are trying to really maximize the instructional time during the day. And if they have to rotate kids through snack time while they're working. Having something quick and easy to eat will make a huge difference. And Danielle, can you go to the next slide? So in the classroom during non-eating times, there will also be some impacts that are important to mention. So right now with half the students in the classroom, they're, they're really still able to move around freely. As I said, sit on floor spots, move back and forth between the two spots. Adding the rest of the class will really not allow students to have as much freedom moving around the room. So. For example, at the kindergarten level, we're going to have to add extra tables into each room with plexiglass. With, you know, adequate space between the tables. So this is going to take away the floor space that many of the teachers rely on for whole group instruction. So this really means students will be in their seats for a lot of the school day. Obviously, our teachers are awesome at giving students move-in breaks as much as possible. But I just think it's an important distinction to make so that people understand what this will really be like. This is, it's obviously very different from our typical and ideal early childhood education experience that we're, that we're used to. So another impact will be the amount of time spent with cleaning and hand washing. So just imagine waiting for twenty kids to wash their hands before leaving the classroom for lunch. That's going to be time-consuming. And I think that we, you know, we've been having conversations at Chandler that we really need to give ourselves permission to slow down and understand that we're going to lose some time. With some of these procedures, but that it, it will get easier as time moves on, but that it's, things are going to be time-consuming. One school-wide impact that's definitely. Going to happen is traffic during parent drop-off and pickup times. Already with half our student population here, the car line in the morning and the afternoon extends onto Chandler Street. I would just ask parents to be patient and show, you know, give us their understanding that going from unloading three hundred students. Or putting three hundred students in cars at dismissal. And going to six hundred students is going to take time. The most important thing is that we're able to dismiss students to cars safely. And we just appreciate any parent help in making the entrance and the exit of your child out of your car or into your car as quick as possible. So we can move the line because I think that's going to be a big adjustment. Can you go to the next slide? And so beginning on January 4th, we did survey parents about their interest in coming back. As of yesterday, we had three hundred and fifty-two responses from Chandler. Almost eighty-five percent of families answered, yes, they would send their children back to school four days. Almost ten percent or thirty-five people answered they would maybe send their child back, but that they were waiting to make the decision until we got closer to February 1st. In addition, five percent or eighteen people answered that they would not be comfortable sending their child back to school. It is important to note that of these eighteen responses, twelve of these families are already in cohort C. So that would potentially, you know, add six additional students to our fully remote population. You can go on to the next slide. Thank you. So we currently have forty-six students in cohort C who are fully remote. You know, with the maybes in the parent survey, if we were potentially to add upwards of thirty-five more students to these groups. We would not be able to manage with the two teachers that we have. The two cohort C teachers that we have right now are amazing and they're doing an awesome job teaching. All of our K through two students, all of their subjects. So if we were to ha- have a significant increase in remote students, it would be. A lot of planning on our part to, to make that work because we wouldn't be able to manage it with our current model. So regardless of the students joining cohort C, we, there may have to be some changes to the model when most students are back in person. We would be, as I said, maintaining the Wednesday remote day. So grade-level teams would still plan common instruction. In order to keep all students on the same pace with curriculum. Cohort C students would continue to participate in morning and afternoon meetings each day with their classroom teacher. As well as the new Wednesday classroom meeting. And the rest of their instruction and assignments would come from the cohort C teachers. Can you go to the next slide, please? So because there are still plans that we will need to make. We are going to need to ask for families to commit to a decision about returning by January twenty-second, which is next Friday. In this situation, unfortunately, we would not be able to offer a two-day model for students any longer. So families would really need to decide whether to send their children four days or to switch to fully remote. I absolutely recognize that this will be a difficult decision for some families. And I just want to put it out there that I'm happy to speak to any family who'd like to talk through the options with me. I think it's also important to recognize that we've been able to be very flexible with switching in and out of cohort C. To this point. So you know, families who decide I'm going to, I now want to go remote or families who've decided, you know, I'm going to, I'm ready to come back into in-person learning. We've been able to do that pretty quickly within days of a parent request. So after this change, it's going to take us more time to prepare to make the switch back into the classroom for any of those families. So just because we're, we're really honestly planning every square foot within a classroom. And so based on the number of in-person students, it's, it's just going to take us a little bit longer to make those switches. So before I wrap up, I do want to just take a minute to. So before I wrap up, I do want to just take a minute to just thank the Chandler staff for being unbelievably flexible and collaborative through this whole planning process. We do have staff members who have varying levels of comfort with bringing all students back into the building. So I just want to make that known. But the common thread is that they're all absolutely dedicated to doing what's best for our students. So it's so much appreciated. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the Chandler plan.
Thank you for your thoroughness. I did, that's all I want to say was really very thorough, Erin.
Thanks, Shannon.
So, um, so for the four day return, and I, I'm sorry if I missed this. This would mean that under this model, everyone except for cohort C would be going in for the same four days and there would be one day at home. Or would it be? Okay. All right. So you're not, so do we know what the at-home day would be?
It would continue to be Wednesday.
It would still, it would still be, it'll be Wednesday. So one of the things that I've been sort of thinking about and is, you know, my son is at Alden. And I should say that I, I'm so glad that these meetings are being recorded on YouTube so that in a few years, my son can watch them and see that I keep bringing him up when he's 10. But so he's 10 and you know, he does reasonably well to self-manage and everything like that. But just like every other family, I'm sure I've got to help him sometimes, right? So with his math and he's little, so I gotta get close to him. And, um, so I, I'm sort of like imagining three feet away. I'm, I'm imagining my son like with a math problem being three feet away. And I'm just kind of curious is like, without getting into too much detail, and maybe it's an unanswerable question. But how, how do we sort of when, with, with a full classroom of kids or almost a full classroom of kids, some of which are just sort of panicking or they've got their hand raised or whatever. What sort of kind of ways do we ensure that the, the, the teachers are protected from getting too close in a real world situation? When they've got a sort of, you know, get down on the mat with the kid and help him out and stuff. Does that, I don't know if that question makes sense, but how, how do we, how do we, how do we ensure that the, that the, the, the teachers are safe with young kids when in a, it seems to me you gotta sort of get close to the kid to help them.
Matt, I'm going to let Erin maybe answer this, but I just want to say that's happening, that, that question you're asking is the same question to be asked in a hybrid environment too.
I know, but it just is less.
But it's happening every day though. I'm saying, and we actually talked to teachers quite a bit about this. They, we encourage them to maintain social distancing, but they're saying they cannot educate young students without getting close and that's happening today. So.
Erin, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. Um, you know, it's, that's the same thing as we've been dealing with since the first day we came back in hybrid. You know, I mean, you kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, second grade teachers cannot make connections with kids from six feet away. You know, I mean, if a kid is upset and you know, as an educator, like you're going to be there next to them and you know, help them. Or if a child needs help with, you know, anything that they're doing in the classroom. So I would say that, you know, we're just trying our best to make that happen. As we have been since day one, but, um, but the reality of the situation is just like you said, I mean, we are, we are closer to kids.
Okay.
If I can, Matt, if I can jump in on that one too, just because that's not a different answer for Alden either. I mean, it's, uh, that's the same theme that teachers have been bringing to me. And, uh, when, when we talk about three to six feet, or we've been talking about six feet and we're, you know, moving that down. When I write that in my slides, when you see those, I'm talking about student desks and how far apart they are in like a learning environment setup. I'm not necessarily talking about teachers. I mean, teachers are trying their best, like, like you're hearing to stay as far as they can, given, you know, like a whole day, but they're moving around, they're in and out. And it's, that's really why we've been, and when we do have a positive case in a, in a class, we end up quarantining the whole, the whole cohort. Even though the students are six feet apart and the teacher's trying to stay away. Realistically, you know, they're all over.
Right. Okay. I've got some other questions, but I think I'm going to hold them until after Chase's because I think that they're more applicable to both situations. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I have a question too, and it's going to be a special ed question. It's for both Chandler and Alden. Would the kids lack of ability to move around the classroom? I know a lot of ed plans, um, require student movement. So that's probably a question for Heather and Heather, if you want to think about it and talk about it later, that's great.
Yeah. I mean, I can answer though, Kelly, too. I think, you know, obviously anything that's on an IEP, we're going to do. I think as a general rule, you know, if, um, kids aren't going to be moving around as much as possible, but anything that's on an IEP is certainly going to be achieved.
Thanks.
Should I go ahead and get started and then we'll do more questions maybe at the end, since they're going to mostly apply to both schools?
Sure. Go ahead, Chase.
Okay, great. So a, a lot of my themes are very similar, but you know, Alden faces maybe some different challenges. So I'll sort of highlight those. So, you know, like Erin was talking about, a full in-person return really means shortening the average distance. And like I was answering Matt's question, the average distance really between student desks in a typical classroom configuration. So at Alden, uh, we're looking at, at three feet between student desks, three, three plus feet, depending on the number of kids in the room. And really limiting that student movement like, uh, like Aaron was talking about. So the picture on the slide shows a classroom and most of our classrooms, unlike Chandler, most of our classrooms are exactly the same. With very few exceptions, and that shows a classroom there with 24 desks. So to just sort of orient you, those desks are four feet apart from each other from left to right, measured from the center of the desk. And then there are three and a half feet apart from front to back, measured from the center of where sort of the chair would typically be in order for a student to be sitting at that desk. There's seven feet from the window, so that gap of space is seven feet. So there's a little flexibility there to, to maybe either inch the desks a little further apart or allow for, this is like a classroom with zero other furniture besides a teacher desk and, and those desks. So that space over there could allow for, for, you know, bookshelves or other necessary furniture, depending on, on what the teacher would want. The front row there is six feet from the large whiteboard in front of the room. So like I said, most, most classrooms have that same shape and size. Like Aaron talked about lunch and snack are, are sort of one of the biggest obstacles because we do need to maintain that six feet between students when they have their masks off. So, you know, at, at Alden, I, we, we do have a plan where we think we could accomplish lunch in the cafeteria with the current furniture we have and students six feet apart. And either facing the same direction or with use of plexiglass, uh, if they're facing each other or, or like closer together. We could accommodate up about approximately four classrooms in the cafeteria. And then one in the lobby of the performing arts center to maintain that six foot distance. Chris Goslin, the assistant principal, I did a lot of measuring a couple of weeks back and moving tables and seeing what that would look like. Uh, I think on another slide, I may have a picture on there, um, but we can stay here for, uh, for right now. We do need to identify alternatives to, to classroom snack because the, the kids are not six feet apart. So some sort of staggered snack plan with students kind of going out into the halls at different times. And as far as, uh, furniture prepar- or out, out and possibly outdoor snack. And, and I think I, um, as Aaron said, we're going to really lean on families to, to provide snacks that are, uh, that are something less than the sort of three course meals that I sometimes see for snacks that they, where they really need a surface to, to, to pick apart. And our tremendous custodial staff has already taken inventory of storage units. They're already moving furniture out and, um, just starting to, uh, starting to prep for additional desks. We had eliminated desks and really only had the right amount of desks in each classroom. So if a classroom had 12 kids in person, they only had 12 desks to allow for a little more movement and a little more sort of breathability space wise. So we're starting to, they are starting to do that work and they've been great. We can go to the next slide. So like we talked about, um, the student's ability to move around the room is going to really be reduced. Those, those desks are, are, you know, feel really close together, uh, when you're in the space. So, you know, students have already had a major adjustment, adjusting to this type of seating versus, you know, more modern classroom seating, like flexible seating, um, or like desk and chair alternatives, which a lot of our teachers have been, you know, with a higher rate in using and implementing in their classroom. So it's back to these regular seats, um, with more, more kids, it's going to be an adjustment for sure. Just as Aaron said, you know, hand washing and safety protocols, I think we have to give ourselves permission that those things are going to take time. And that can be, you know, frustrating. But we just have to recognize that that kind of thing will take more time with more students in the room. Everything is sort of, you know, will be a little choppier, just some adjustment period in terms of getting those cohorts back together and, and sort of rebuilding a classroom community now with the full complement of, um, of kids in the class. I talked a little bit about snack. I talked about the, uh, content of the snack might need to change a little bit. Uh, we need family help with that. Snacks that can be eaten, eaten really on the go, uh, like outside while standing. Snacks that don't require utensils, uh, would be, is, are going to be really helpful. Our, our lunch times, you can see there, we'll have to expand a little bit. We, we do have a draft plan that includes six lunch times. Starting as early as 10:10 for half of our third graders. So I think that's important to, to, to sort of highlight there that that's a pretty early lunchtime. Our, our lunchtime, the earliest lunchtimes we've had in my time at Alden have been 11:25 has been the earliest lunch, the first lunch with recess happening before that. We're looking at a plan where, um, half of our, half of our grade would be outside, half of a, a, a single grade would be outside at recess. Half would be eating, they'd swap. So we do, you know, five classes in, eating five classes out. And those lunchtimes, um, would run from 10:10 to 1:10. The last lunch of fifth graders finishing at 1:10. We have been working on, uh, Chris and I have been working on looking at, um, the pickup and drop off times. The pickup and drop off makes me, you know, a little nervous. There's going to be some traffic. We're backed up like, like they are over at Chandler. We're, we're backed up, um, off of campus and onto Alden Street in the afternoons. So if we're looking at, you know, doubling that amount of traffic coming into campus, we got to look at alternatives. And so we've been looking at, um, brainstorming ways to, to separate the bus drop off from the car drop off altogether. Maybe bus drop off happens at another place on campus. And then those kids walk over to Alden. So maybe bus drop off doesn't happen right in front of the school. And that would allow us to have more cars, both in the back and the front and have two areas of, um, of car drop off. So I, I guess I'm just highlighting that in that we're looking at sort of like kind of major shifts, things we wouldn't have thought of, um, to accommodate that. Next slide. So similarly, you know, we, we took a very similar survey of, of parents and, you know, overwhelmingly we do expect the majority of, of students back for those four days that we're talking about. Almost 80% of students said yes. We had a, a, a few more that were undecided than, than Chandler. I'm not sure it says on there, but this was like 460 something people who responded on the survey. And, uh, so we, so we expect, we expect a vast majority of students back. As far as our cohort C, uh, we have a little more room to grow. There, uh, we have, and you can go ahead to the next slide. We have, um, 51 students in, in, uh, in cohort C, three cohort C teachers, one per grade level. So our, our groupings there are a little, are a little smaller. And so we have, we do have some space to accommodate those maybes who might opt into a fully remote cohort. We do think it's important with the cohort C to maintain, um, meeting times and maintain that classroom connection, uh, with the meeting times in one form or another, in order to maintain that classroom connection. So I think those are things where we're still looking at and, um, and figuring out the details of exactly how that looks. And as far as the timeline, I don't need to repeat this. This is very, this is just the same as Chandler School. So looking at, uh, making families to make a decision by January 22nd, we'll get a, a survey out and, and like they've done at Chandler, the, the cohort C I've been super flexible with people moving in and out, and we get those done really fast. I'm not sure that we could do that like quite as rapidly, um, because it has just kind of more implications as far as measuring those exact distances between kids. We don't have as much space to play with. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chase. I just have one comment that I want parents to be aware of and everybody to be aware of. One of you brought up quarantining. So just now, you know, it's, it's certain kids in the classroom. If you're a close contact within the proximity of six feet and you fall under the guidelines, it's probably more likely now that the entire class would be quarantined.
Well, I can jump in there and say, we've actually in elementary's been, we've been quarantining entire cohorts.
Okay.
Yeah, even, even with the, with the, you know, general guidance that we've, or guidelines that we've had, six feet generally of distance between, um, between student desks, because you, we can't really account for where are the kids at recess? We're trying to keep them apart, but I'll, I'll say from my own experience at recess, that's what I do if I'm out at recess. I say, you guys, you guys have to be further apart. You guys have to, you know, and you feel bad. There's three kids sitting together, just talking because they can't really do much else. And I'm like, you guys have to spread out. So we're doing that. I'm doing that all the time.
But I mean.
To clarify, just to clarify, Kelly, at the secondary level, we're a little more precise with it.
Right.
Okay. At the elementary level, if there's a positive case, we are quarantining the whole class.
Got it.
And we have been, we have been all along.
Okay.
So that wouldn't change.
And it's just also just, we talked about earlier, but there's just movement during the day. It's a very imperfect, it's a very imperfect six feet, right? Kids are kind of buzzing around, teachers are moving, all that. So we've been doing that from the get-go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Um, school committee members, who would like to go first?
Can I, uh, can I ask? Oh, I'm sorry, Julia. Go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to ask that, um, based on your survey numbers. At the moment, it, it sounds as if in each school, you have say fewer than 5% of your students are in cohort C. Am I right? If you've got 46 at Chandler and 51 at Alden. So that means fewer than 5% of students are getting no face-to-face instruction. And if the survey results end up, you know, if the maybes all opt for remote, then that proportion of students not getting any face-to-face instruction is going to rise significantly. What, um, what measures are you, or what strategies are you going to try to employ to help parents feel more comfortable about, um, having their students attend four days a week in person? Cause it would, it would seem to me a, a trade-off, um, if we had more students going fully remote.
Yeah. And I think just to, just to clarify, the students in cohort C are getting, um, at Chandler, four days of instruction live with our cohort C teachers. They're getting, um, every subject area taught live to them every day. Um, and the curriculum is exactly in line with the kids who are in person. So that would continue with, um, with the remote students to be in line with the kids who are here.
And that's, that's the same at Alden too.
You're on mute, Julia.
There are potentially students who are having two days of face-to-face instruction, who may now be having no face-to-face instruction and going fully remote.
And, yeah, and you mean in-person.
In-person, sorry.
Right.
Uh, in-person. And, you know, as Dr. Antonucci has been saying, in-person instruction is, is the gold standard or what we're aiming for. So I'm just, you know, a bit concerned that we, that you all are helping parents, um, make a decision that are feel comfortable making decision to, to keep their child, um, with face-to-face instruction. And, and what can be done to help parents do that, that we don't have more, more students entering cohort C.
I mean, I think that's tough. I just, I think everybody, um, you know, has their own comfort level with the situation that they sort of have to figure out for their own family. And, you know, like I said, I'm happy to talk through the options with anybody who's sort of teetering and unsure of their decision. You know, and I can talk about specifics of their child's own classroom situation and what that would look like and the number of students and things like that. So, you know, just to put it out there again, I'm happy to do that with any families who are struggling with the decision for sure.
Yeah, same here. I would say it's, it's a decision that they have to make. And I feel like that's kind of why we're here now, kind of describing and, and I think Aaron and I are trying to be as realistic as possible about, you know, this is what this is going to look like. This is how this changes. This is how the kids are going to be closer together and how it limits some, some benefits for students. But they have to weigh that against the idea of, you know, being in person with your teacher and that ability to sort of, you know, work, work with your teacher, have your questions answered in real time. And that's obviously a, to us, a huge benefit.
Right. So parents should really get in touch with you and talk about their individual student's situation. Okay.
Absolutely. And I think every student is doing a little differently in remote. I've heard stories of some kids really thriving in, in that, in, in that remote cohort. And, and others, you know, not so much are struggling. I think it just really depends because every student is so different.
To, to follow up on, on Julia's point, you know, looks like we have, you know, over two hundred and seventy parents or, or participants on this meeting, but I think we can't over-communicate the information that you guys have shared tonight. So I hope there, you know, the January twenty-second deadline, you know, I hope there's multiple tight ways of communicating to the parents so that they, they really do understand the information that you're sharing tonight. I'm just, I'm, I'm a little bit worried about that, that people, you know, aren't going to watch this meeting or don't fully appreciate the impact. And Matt, the, the picture that you shared, Chase, from the classroom in Alden with the spacing, it gave me the heebie-jeebies, honestly. It, it's, it's really close. When you're thinking about those kids sitting down, getting up, moving around, and I know they're wearing masks. I appreciate that. But I think, you know, that picture needs to be, be shared in other, in other, in other ways to make sure that parents really understand the impact of the added numbers.
Shannon, just could I make a comment on that? And by the way, I don't, I, I, it, there's some things that are just anxiety-producing, right? And it's just a change of practice. But I do want to say even the, the chairs are closer, but there are still dramatic changes that we've made in school this year that still make it exponentially safer than it used to be. Just as an example, most elementary classrooms in a typical year, we, we might have hexagon tables, kids are sitting face-to-face, they're in small groups. Like, we're doing none of that. So our, even though the, the desks might feel close together, bear in mind, they're still facing forward. You know, there's still lack, so it's, I'm with you. Like, it's just weird transition step, but it's still way different than it was sort of in normal times. Hopefully, we can get back to normal times sometime. But there is still, even in the cafeteria, like Aaron showed the picture, kids can't sit across from each other. They're going to be, you know, all that. So I just want to say, I hear you a hundred percent. I understand what you're saying, but.
And I, no, but I think that's very clear to all of us who have been sitting in through all of these meetings the last six to seven months. I think that's very clear, John.
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that parents who aren't tuned in in the same way
Totally.
Really understand and get the information. And it has to be sent in different formats so that, you know, some people don't read their emails. I don't honestly read half the emails that I get. So, you know, Twitter, Facebook, links to documents on the website so that people get the access. That's all. And I, and I, and I'm, yeah.
Shannon, I think we felt that it was important for this conversation to take place tonight, for you to have your opportunity to ask questions, share concerns. And then the hope would be that we would follow up with the recording of this school committee, have the recommendation that was made at the meeting and encourage families to watch the meeting. If they didn't have a chance to attend, or if they didn't realize that this conversation was happening tonight for whatever reason. So definitely, I, we agree that we need to make sure this meeting is, um, publicized beyond this evening.
Yeah, but I also worry about, I, I think we need to digest it in different ways. I mean, I think you're getting the message, right? Like, who's going to sit through a two-and-a-half-hour meeting? You know, you guys need to digest the bullets and things like that. But you get it. I mean, it's just a communications issue. So.
I also do want to add one thing, unrelated to what you just said, if you don't mind, is that about that, the student learning time regulation that's effective January nineteenth? I just want to be clear because there is a question in the Q and A, and someone also mentioned it. We are going to implement that on January nineteenth. If we're not, if we're not coming back on February first, we are going to implement that next week. Because there's sort of no time to waste. If for some reason it was pushed back, well, I guess what I'm saying is, if we're coming back February first, we're willing to kind of be loose about that regulation for those few days in between. But we're not willing to go beyond that. So for some reason, you know, we decide that we don't want to come back February first, and it's March first, or whatever it might be. Next week, January nineteenth, the expectation is that our kids are going to be engaged in synchronous learning all day. We just can't. It'd be irresponsible for us and, and really out of compliance of the state not to, not to make that happen next week. So it's fast, but it came out of nowhere. And that's just the way it is. Every district in the Commonwealth is going through the same thing. So I just want to be clear about that. Kind of no time to waste.
Kelly, is it okay if Aaron comments on what will happen with the learning plan if a, a classroom is moved into a quarantine situation? And then also Katie was going to comment on transportation impact if, if we had all students return. So is that okay?
Yeah, great. Yeah. So somebody asked the question in the Q and A, if an entire cohort is quarantined, how will the teacher deliver instruction? All day online or twice a day, AM, PM? So we have had that situation at the elementary level already this year, and we did make sure that the students were kept up with the instruction online. So even at the kindergarten level, the teacher, a teacher was zooming with her class at scheduled times during the school day on their scheduled in-person days to deliver all of the instruction for all the content areas that they needed to get through.
So if it's okay, I can, if there's no follow-up questions, I'll just also include some information about transportation. So we are in the process of working with first student who is our yellow bus transportation, transportation provider. And they are essentially going through the process of creating brand-new routes for Alden and Chandler based off of all of the students that are currently registered for transportation, going to school four days a week. So it's the process that we go through during the summer of completely creating brand-new bus routes. So there may be some impacts to families' bus stops. There certainly are going to be implications to the seats that the students are currently assigned to. For our capacity, we do think that the majority absolutely at Alden, all of the buses will be at capacity. And we are going to follow the guideline that siblings will have to sit together in a seat. And then similarly at Chandler, the buses will be near capacity. So we won't have any opportunity to have any new students register. If we have students that are moving from cohort C back into in-person learning, we may not have capacity to be able to add them to transportation, just simply because having all of the students attending school at the same four days a week, it just won't lend itself to any other capacity on the buses. So definitely, there will be some changes. Well, we will definitely communicate the changes with the routes if there's any changes to bus stops or bus numbers. Some more information to come on that.
So, Kelly, can I, um, make a comment and ask a question?
Sure.
So I, um, just, you know, one of the things that this year has been, you know, so challenging for our families and our, our teachers and administrators. But one of the things that's frustrated me the most is, is how often people have said, how come you're not putting the best interests of students first? And, and I think because we've been in a pandemic, really, there isn't a teacher who is working in our district or who has gotten into the profession who doesn't every single day try and put the interests of their students first. That's why they're teachers. And our administrators, your enthusiasm and passion, every single one of you are motivated. You've been working tirelessly since March. It's so clear, you've thought through it a level of detail that none of us can really appreciate it. But John, you said it. I've always believed it. I believe it's true with every single one of you. You are in this field because you're interested in the education of our students. So to me, that was the thing that was one of the most discouraging and very commonly heard criticism I heard, is that we weren't thinking first about our students. But this is very different in that we have a responsibility to the adults that work with our students in a way that we never have in the past, that their, their safety and the well-being of themselves and their families are different now than they've ever been historically. I, I, I just want to put in context, I, I really don't think we should, and I hate to say this because I'm not a professional in this field. I don't really think we should drive our plan based on what Desi is telling us we have to do. And the reason for that is December eighteenth, when they issued this guidance, we were averaging two cases a week. And our peak was five. Any given week from the start of school, we had a maximum of five cases. Since December eighteenth through today, John, based on your data, we've averaged over fifteen cases a week. And we've had a peak of twenty-seven or twenty-eight. There's been a five-hundred percent increase since Desi issued this guidance. So my question is, we have two completely different schools. There is clear agreement from all of the professionals and the research that's been done to date that our youngest students are the ones that are the highest priority, along with the special ed students, which I, I, I really want to commend the, the district for putting a stake in the ground and getting all of our special ed students back to the maximum extent. But have you considered as an alternative to, like, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not worried about what Desi has told us to do. But have you considered a rolled introduction of four-day in-person, starting first with Chandler, second with Alden, as opposed to doing both simultaneously? And just give me your thoughts on crow and con of, of giving ourselves a little bit more time and not trying to do both at once.
Yeah. So Peter, a couple of things, and please, anybody feel free to jump in, just about the, the cases. And by the way, let me, a few things, actually. We're not doing this because of Desi. We had put this February first target date out two months ago. In fact, it was January nineteenth at one point. And we've been working towards a, a target because I think that's the professionally responsible thing to do, is try to get as many kids back in school as possible. We've been marching towards that since October twentieth or whatever, you know, we really started talking in earnest about the next step. The Desi guidelines was just a little curveball, but by no means, but our February first date was well before that. So I just want to clarify that. It's kind of a nuisance at this point, but it's, you know, it, it's kind of almost irrelevant to our particular target date. I also want to say the cases that you mentioned, certainly concerning, right? Very, very concentrated with high school students. There's been very little change at the elementary level. A handful, you know, obviously, and in every case concerns us. Trust me, we, when, when a case happens, you'll, you should see what happens here, right? But vast, vast majority of those cases, high school students from a very specific point of origin. Very, very little impact at the elementary. So just, I kind of want to clarify that. And then, but to answer your final question, I mean, we could do anything. Okay? We can push the date back. We can never come back. We can roll it at Chandler. We can, you know, phase in Alden later. I'd say, I still stand by the fact that I still think our school buildings, even with our, our new model that we're proposing, are the safest place for our kids to be during the school day. I think it is safe for our staff. We've engaged our staff extensively over the last two months as we develop this plan. There are clearly some people dissatisfied with it. I can't help that people kind of go around a pro, a process, but we've fully engaged the staff. And I, I reckon, I acknowledge that there's a high level of anxiety. But as far as, you know, splitting up the elementaries, it's hugely disruptive for families. So how many transitions are we going to ask families to make? I don't really care. I mean, I'm not having to make that transition. But to me, this is efficient. It's safe with obviously eyes wide open with, with what we're talking about with some of the changes. But I, I just don't see a compelling reason to, to, to split that. By the way, it's just a, it's just a feeling. It's not based on any, anything but that. So.
So let me just react then. You know, two things are changing rapidly. One is we've had a surge that hopefully will be behind us, but we don't know for sure. Two, I was very surprised to learn that vaccination has occurred, occurred actually in Dexbury. So a week or two or three or a, or more could be very consequential in terms of our ability to vaccinate teachers. Three is we have February vacation coming. So if you started Chandler on February, uh, February first, you could start Alden February twenty-second, and it's only a two-week difference in time, but it could be a massive difference in terms of availability for vaccination to give us some time to assess. My, my gut, John, is I, I just don't feel like putting five hundred students back into the, those two buildings altogether, given where we sit right now, just doesn't feel right to me. And so I'm just trying to explore, is an alternative? Have you considered it? What is the downside? I mean, we heard in the presentations, physically, there are real differences. And, and Alden, in some ways, might be a little bit more challenging because of every single classroom being exactly the same. That's a positive on the one hand. It means every single classroom is the same. But the difference is, there won't be some with greater flexibility. Maybe that might be the case at Chandler or less, et cetera. So that's all. I'm just suggesting, you know, February vacation coming, we have vaccination coming, and it started in Dexbury, make a difference.
Yeah, I, I, well, a couple of things, Peter. Fine. I mean, listen, I'm not, listen, we were, we were tasked with trying to get kids back to school. Okay? So we said, we said right upfront, we don't know if there's a right answer. There's not a right answer. So we, we have a plan in place. I think it's, I think it's the best thing for kids. If there's a different date that people want to target, you know, we, we can certainly talk about that. I just think what's going to happen is we're going to keep on kicking the can down the road, and it's going to be June. Okay? And our kids will have been out of school for a year and three months. Right now, a lot of the reaction is, is about emotion. And the same emotion is going to occur on February first. That's going to occur on February twenty-second. And then we're going to ask ourselves, well, April vacation's coming up, so why not kick it back to after April vacation? And then it's September. And so like, I, I really, I'm not trying to convince anybody that somehow we have the secret sauce here because no one knows. No one knows that the right thing to do is we're building the plane here as we're flying it. But I just, I just don't see any compelling reason. And by the way, the medical community, and I'm having to rely on the state telling us what their medical experts are saying. They feel that these types of plans are safe. I'm not a doctor, right? And there's not even a consensus in the medical community. But so I love to hear the feedback, and I'm not trying to convince anybody that we have the absolute answer here. But I was tasked with getting kids back to school, and I feel that's my job. If we want to go a different path, I'm, I'm, I'm totally flexible. I really am. But I'm not going to be driven by emotion. That's what I'm going to tell you. By emotion, I'm going to be driven by kind of fact. So I'm not suggesting you are. I'm just saying.
I know, but you just take into consideration a week, two weeks is a lifetime in terms of vaccination, right? It's not a linear. And also, we've, we've had a recent surge. So I'm just, I'm not emotional because I don't have to do the job that you have to do or the teachers have to do. I'm just, I, I'm just suggesting that to me, just, it, it, and, and again, I, I wouldn't characterize my comments about reservations as being anti-student. You know, it's, it's trying to, it's trying to wrap our head around a, a really complex problem where much more than the student's well-being is at risk here.
Yeah.
So.
Peter, we, we wrestled with this. Trust me. I mean, we don't, we, we, this has been a brutal process, tough conversations, and I'm not, I'm not dismissing anything you're saying. In fact, I can make the other argument, but I, I just do get really worried. We thought, we thought we were going to be out of school for two weeks last March. And we have kids who are actually in crisis. And so at some point, we can kick it three weeks, we can kick it a month. And I'd be comfortable with that. But we have, we just have to be eyes wide open with that to say, chances are nothing's going to be different in three weeks, but nothing's to say chances are, nothing's going to be different in three weeks, but nothing's going to be different on March 1st. The chances of our, us being vaccinated by then, slim to none. Maybe slim, maybe not none. So it just, I, I think we just need to all be aware that we might be having the same conversation a month or not. And that's fair, you know, if we, if we want to do that, because if, if there's really a sense that it's not the right timing, you know, we're, we're here to serve kind of the community. And so I, yeah, we're doing the best based on what we've heard from the community.
Yeah. And just of vaccination, I mean, I'm someone who's waiting for it because I have a comorbidity. And that has been put off. Like I'm, I'm phase two. And I'm not going to see the vaccine till probably March or April, which I think teachers are in, in phase two as well. So I ha, I do have my concerns about vaccination. I mean, the prediction is only three quarters of the country is going to be vaccinated by July. So I'm my, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to have a normal fall. Like I'm already sort of anticipating this is not, this is not going to go completely away. So I don't.
I would love to hear people's opinions though, because I, you know, I, I'm, I actually had staff, all staff meetings today and we, we talked about this and you know, the way we do our business is tricky, right? We have public meetings and this is our chance of, uh, uh, our only chance to have discussion. So we will do nothing. Uh, we will not move forward. Um, if there's not kind of consensus about what the best thing is for our community, because you, it's really important that you're representing uh, the community um, across the board. And we also should hear first, you know, from, from um, the public or public comment too. So I'm truly, we're truly flexible. It's just that we, we were tasked with a plan and we put it on the, we put it on the table. So.
I um, I, for my part, I, I actually think that um, on, on the surface, yeah, I mean, it seems counterintuitive with a spike in cases and everything that we would be bringing the kids back to school. However, there's two things that are sort of going through my mind that I just want to state for the record. One is um, I actually feel like February 1st is a good date. One, because there is this argument about kicking the can. I mean, every week is critical, right? So you keep kicking it. We lose all that time. And secondly, when you talk about February vacation, I'm almost of the mind that February 1st is great because now you sort of, you can road test what is in theory right now for a couple of weeks, and then you get a week off and sort of like, you know, massage the edges and figure, figure things out. So I almost feel like the fact that we'd be coming back a couple of weeks before February break is good. Cause you're going to make some mistakes probably, you know, things have to be sort of refined. You got to think on your feet. And what better way than on February vacation to then just sort of like go and change up a few things if you have to change them? So I, I actually feel like the timing is, is good. The second thing, and you know, I know this is going to make me popular with the community or whatever, and I hate to lecture, but I'm just going to lecture. Everyone wants to get the kids back in school. Everyone has to do his and her part to social distance and wear the frigging masks. I mean, I'm sorry, but like, we can't act like irresponsible people and then expect that, you know, we, we're, we're going to put the teachers and the administrators and the custodians and the nurses, by the way, we haven't talked about them. Um, in, in sort of, you know, harms way, you can't sort of have it, but at least in my opinion, you can't have it both ways. So I, I feel like from what I'm hearing, I trust you and I think that February 1st is a good target date to go for, for the elementary schools. I just think that, that speaking for myself, I have to double down on my responsible behavior. I think the community has to sort of take a reflective look and double down on its responsible behavior so that we are all sort of singing from the same hymn book on the importance of the kids' education. And that really starts with us acting in the right way and not trying to have the best of both worlds. Ski trips and football and all that stuff. And but, oh, you have to have the kids back in school too, because the whole thing is a hoax or whatever. Like I just don't want to hear it anymore. Right? You can't have, you cannot have it both ways.
Um, yeah. Can I just say on that, I, I'm sorry, is that, I don't want you to move point just before I says, I, we, we've talked so much about that internally and it's such a great cause of concern, but what I would say, and, and I, I don't know how to say this sort of delicately, but it's not going to change. Um, there's no evidence to suggest that it's going to change. So we need to know that as we make our decisions. We have, it's actually gotten a little worse in the community recently. And so I, and I don't mean to be such a downer when I say that, but we have tried over and over again to send these, you know, reminders and um, I just, I don't know if it's just society in general, but that's not going to change, not going to change in three weeks. It's not going to change, you know, for April vacation. So I, I just, and I don't mean to be such a doom and gloom, but I think we need to continuously send reminders and we have been, but I think as we move forward with our planning, we just need to know what the reality is.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, but I still think it has to be said because there were understandably a lot, and there are understandably a lot of parents who have been beating the drum to get the kids back in like as early as week one and week two. Um, and now, you know, it's looking like there's serious discussion around sort of making that happen. And so I'm just going to ask that people start to ask more, you know, act more responsibly. Capital got attacked last week about like wearing a mask and now you've got house members who have COVID. You know, so this happened, you know, this is, it's a, it's a, it's a real thing. So try to sort of keep that in your mind. You know, once again, I am for getting the kids back in as soon as possible. I hope that we go ahead and, and, and take that route. I'm just asking the parents and the families to do the right thing so that we can, you know, make it successful. That's all. And maybe we have, and I'm glad that we're planning for people not doing it, but do it anyway. Because I can guarantee, it's just like, it's a lot of averages. Some of the parents who have been beating the drum the loudest, I can guarantee are probably some of the ones who haven't been social distancing and wearing masks and stuff. I'm not pointing a finger at anyone specifically because I don't know anyone, but it's just the law of averages sort of thing. You just sort of look at it in circles. You know what I mean? There's an overlap. There's got to be an overlap of people who are demanding the kids get back in school, yet who are not taking the thing seriously. So wise up.
John, just to follow up on what you said about it's not, it's not going to change. I think that's another piece of information that people who don't watch these meetings may not fully appreciate in terms of families making their decision about what they want to do. Um, and I don't know how we communicate that to the broader world and maybe it's obvious from some of your communications already. But um, I think for parents who are kind of on the border to hear that message that that there are going to continue to be families putting the rest of the community at risk and to take that into consideration at an individual family level for whether you know, that that's going to be there.
Yeah. By the way, I don't mean to be a smart aleck when I say that. I just, it's, it has been so frustrating. My message, my message last week was pretty clear that, and we have families who are lying to contract tracers who aren't answering the phone. We put that in writing last week, right? You guys saw that communication we put out. So and I don't mean to say this community can't do better, but it just, it's been a very, very, very frustrating few weeks. And so that's where that, that's where it's gone the other way. Um, and that's, that's why I said that. So.
I, I, I would, I would just wanted to comment, you know, that um, you know, Duxbury is no different than anywhere else. So here we're talking about our community, but anyone open up their eyes. This is not a Duxbury issue. It's a, it's a national issue. So we're just not going to get behavior in Duxbury that's exceptional. We're going to get what's average. And unfortunately, this is what we've been all living through. So, so I think, you know, John, I think I've heard some criticism of some of our communication has seemed to be sort of like, Duxbury, you're not being good. You know, this is a country we're not being good issue. So Duxbury is not in a uniquely misbehaving community or is a, uh, you know, uh, kind of particularly virtuous community when it comes to public health. It's just we're kind of like every, every other community around the country that's struggling with this. So, so I just think um, this isn't really just Duxbury. It's happening in every one of our neighboring towns and everywhere else. So.
A hundred percent.
So anyhow, that's uh.
Okay. I would like to open it up to public comment. Um, so if folks could raise their hands, that would be great. Let me read. Public comment, Duxbury School Committee welcomes public comment at school committee meetings. There's an opportunity during the meeting for members of the community to address issues and concerns about policy, budget, or administrative matters, or simply to share ideas about how we can work together to improve the Duxbury Public Schools. We value your input and respect divergent views. We only ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes and refrain from airing grievances about individual members of the school committee or the school community. And my final reminder is it's not a Q and A. It's not like ask a question and it's going to be answered. Um, if it's something that administration can give a quick answer to, great, but this is not that. So. Uh, show of hands and Dr. Antonucci, if you want to monitor.
Yep, I will. So um, the first one up, just a first name here, Joyce. So Joyce, uh, if you have a question or comment or a comment, I should say. And you're muted?
Yes. Um, I am an instructional aide in the kindergarten at Chandler. And I am there every day and take care of recess and lunch and whatever. And how do you expect us to as staff to be safe when we're going to have not, not 11, but 23 students in the classrooms?
Yeah. Thanks for your comment, Joyce. I mean, we, all I can speak to is the, the plan that now the principals discussed, you know, discussed earlier. Uh, Christine May. Ms. May.
Hello. I'd like to speak uh, from the perspective of a biologist and an educator and also an Alden parent. Um, I've sent you, you know, a letter this past week and also to the school committee. Uh, I think that this is a really bad time to go forward with this. You mentioned earlier the fears about in-school spread uh, being unfounded. And I would say that that's not true right now. The game is changing. We have this new trend. You said there are no new trends. We have this new variant. This new variant has been seen in Connecticut. We know from the British research that this new variant is much more contagious. We do not know if it's more deadly, but why would we want to be guinea pigs on that? Studies suggest it may be more contagious even in young children. So to put our students in that position where, okay, we've got a new variant. We know it's in New England. We know it's going to be in Duxbury soon because like you said, we're being realistic. We know people are not, you know, behaving themselves. Then we are opening ourselves up to being the guinea pigs and saying, okay, are we going to be that community? And I know other towns are doing it. It doesn't make it the right thing to do. You also mentioned the fact that teachers may be already approaching students within the three to six feet already. That may be true, but one student, I can tell you, I'm a teacher. One student approaching a student, a child, you know, occasionally during the day is very different than exposing a child to twice as many other students and by that extension, families in his or her daily life and not occasionally, but for the full length of the day. Um, and I don't think this is kicking the can down the road. I would like nothing better as a teacher than to have my kids in school. My school is one quarter capacity. So I see my students one day a week and it's very, very difficult, but we've made that decision. We're sticking to the six feet no matter what, because that's what the CDC is saying. Um, and that's what we know to be safest for our students. Um, I don't think it's kicking the can down the road to say, let's give this variant a month in New England and see what it does in that month. And to say March may be a good time to do this, but I don't think February is, it is just too soon for us to have so little information on the new variant, um, which all of the, the medical establishment is concerned about. And to just jump on this, I think is very poor timing. And I, I appreciate the stuff that, you know, planning has been gone into it. I know it's not being rushed. I appreciate that there's been a lot of planning. I think it's the wrong time to initiate that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. We can give it a minute. Mike McGee.
Thanks, John. I just kind of wanted, I was encouraged by um, what was going on with the fire department and the board of health this week with uh, the vaccination program. Um, and I was wondering, um, as we move forward here with the February target date, if there will be a, a plan to um, do that locally here, uh, if that will be uh, something that will be related to the teachers beforehand, uh, steps will be taken to know who will be included in that, priorities, things like that. Um, if that's something you're planning right now and, and working out with the board of health.
Yeah, Mike. Did it make, Mike, you talking about the vaccine? I'm sorry, like vaccinating teachers?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's phase two. It's coming up on February 1st. Um, I'm hopeful that we get, you know, moving on that. Uh, currently with what's going on here.
Yeah, let me, yeah, I'm going to, um, let me just answer. Yeah. So we're very anxious and excited for the possibility of, of educators getting vaccinated. The only thing we know, and it's the only thing the state's publishing at this point, is that the window for teachers um, is February to April. So we're, you know, optimistic um, that it's on the earliest side of that, but there's been zero communication from the state to our public health officials or otherwise. So we're anxiously awaiting more information, but we can't wait for the day where we can roll it out. And when it's time to roll it out, today was a great test run in the community. The community did a great job with the first responders. We're going to, we're going to roll through pretty quickly and get our, get our people vaccinated. But unfortunately, it's, everybody knows it's been kind of a slow rollout in the country, but um, stay tuned for that. Thanks for the question, uh, Mike. Ms. Kilpatrick.
Um, hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
All right. Um, so I just kind of wanted to make a um, quick comment. Um, so my daughter has been going to a pod this whole time since September. And I just think that it would be significantly um, safer for, um, you know, I'm, I'm not the only one who's been doing this. Like, you know, there's, there's a lot of families that have been doing this. It'll be significantly safer for um, the Duxbury School families if the kids didn't have to go to pods as much and be exposed to, you know, other kids from, you know, different towns. So that's just kind of um, um, my perspective. And uh, I hope that um, we can go back four days on February 1st. That is all.
I, I'd just like to respond and say that um, we've never encouraged Duxbury families to join pods with other towns or, I mean, that's sort of assuming a risk and that's, that speaks to the behavior that we were talking about. And I don't mean to call you out on that. And I know that that's what families have to do because they're desperate, but that's the decision that individual families are making that are impacting the whole community, if I can be fair in saying that.
Ms. O'Connell. Whoops. Ms. O'Connell.
Oh, I'm trying to unmute myself.
You're good.
Oh, okay. So a little bit in addition to what that previous lady said, I feel like what's being missed is the impact that all this is having on the children. And I know a lot of parents resort to those pods, Kelly, because they're worried about the significant decline in their child's education and how that's going to impact them long-term. In addition to that, and I know, I wish our ICU nurse from, or not our ICU nurse, our children's hospital nurse was back on. But we're not even talking about the mental health aspect of this. There are kids in really bad shape mentally from all this that is going on. And we can talk about what-ifs and, you know, this virus and who may have it. I think the biggest thing that we should be able to see with all these close contacts that we had is how many of those clon, close contacts actually were positive? And that's your answer to whether or not these kids should be back or not. If it's 2% or 5% versus 75% of our close contacts, that's your answer. We are quarantining kids at an alarmingly high rate. And if none of them come back positive, then we have the answer as to whether or not these kids should be back in school or not. Because therefore it's not being transmitted in, in class. And that should be the, the science and the statistics and the numbers should be dictating our decisions. And this goes back to what you said, uh, Dr. Antonucci. It shouldn't be about our feelings. It should be about the data. And I feel like as a school, you should have those numbers. The board of health should have those numbers. How many kids were positive? How many of those? of those kids transmitted it within school to somebody else? How many of those close contacts were positive? I don't know if I'm at my two minutes, but I can't stress enough the mental health aspect of what has been going on. We're so focused on physical health, physical health, physical health, suicide, self mutilation, depression, anxiety, not to mention obesity, drug use, alcohol abuse. These are all real issues. So I feel like if you want to look at the whole picture, then you better start looking at the whole picture, because we might solve the COVID problem this year, but what's next year going to look like? And what's this going to look like long term? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. No more right now, Kelly. Kelly, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I would, I would love to, I'd love to get a real clear consensus, you know, from, from, from the committee. We, we are, again, we were tasked with putting a plan in place. There was an outcry in the community for us to get kids back in person. Not surprisingly, not surprisingly, there's definitely a difference of opinion, not just in Duxbury, but around the country. But I would just, I need to say this, and it's hard to say this because we haven't had a private conversation, but we, you know, we're not going to move forward if there's not support from, from, from this committee and, you know, generally speaking, the broader community. So I don't know, can we, can, can we just have that? It's hard to do because I know we're on Zoom, but can we have that conversation? Because I don't want to go off on a, on a rogue path here.
Yeah, I'd like to go one at a time. And I can go alphabetically, school committee members, and if they've had time to collect their thoughts. So Julia?
Sure. So going back to what I said earlier, I think my interest, or my priority is to have as many students as possible, having as many hours as possible of in-person learning on a weekly basis. For families that are prepared to participate in that, obviously, there are families who've selected Cohort C from, from September, and that's, that's their choice. But my priority is to offer as much in-person time to students as possible. So my interest at the moment is to understand how this change that you're proposing for February 1 is going to be communicated to parents at the level of detail, and then to understand what their response is going to be. Because as I said earlier, if I'm concerned that parents may, there may be a significant number of families who feel that now is not the time, and they, their option is to pull out of hybrid, two days of in-person learning, and go to fully remote. And to me, that would be a loss. And so that's one concern I have is to understand what the results of the survey that you're asking parents to complete by the 22nd is going to be. And then, you know, the other risk is that by bringing students back four days in person, then we do prompt an outbreak within the schools, and then the schools have to go fully remote. Or maybe there's not an outbreak, but there are enough quarantining exercises going on that, that it becomes difficult to even administer classes in person. So I'm, yeah, but I'd like to see what parents are thinking, once they've been fully informed of what the proposals entail for their children, their classrooms, et cetera.
So are we assuming that the parents have not been fully informed, John and Danielle? Would you agree with that?
I mean, it's all iterative, right? I mean, we, tonight's the most, the most detail we've had. I think we've been pretty clear, I mean, if not blunt, since October, that returning fully in person in Duxbury means three-foot social distancing guideline. I mean, I said that ad nauseam, you know, so, but, you know, we can certainly, we did survey, we already, you know, the principals reported on the survey. We just asked that question. I guess one of the challenges here is that, I guess, depending on the week and depending on the, what's happening, you know, answers could change. I think that's maybe to Julia's point, what would the next one look like? But again, I don't know how to, at some point, we need to make a decision and then just execute. So I'd have to figure out how we would do that.
Can I just jump in really quick? Just, you know, the question, the exact question that Chase and I asked on our survey, said if we are able to return four days in person, many of our classroom, classrooms would provide a distance for students between three to six feet. You know, would you be comfortable sending your child back? And at Chandler, we did already have 85% of our families say yes to that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, survey results depend on what the question is that you ask, right? Any market research person will tell you that. So it does really, you know, it's important that you've spelled that out. But I'm going to Shannon's point that she made earlier, you know, we all sit in these meetings on a bi-weekly basis for months and months and months, and we all feel like we're really familiar with what you've said. But clearly, there are families in the community who, who don't feel informed, don't feel that they understand the full picture. And so, you know, I think it's fair to, to, to keep working overtime, as you already are, to communicate. These are all the details, and this is what it's going to look like for your child in the particular classroom. And this is what you need to be prepared for. And, and then to understand what their reaction is.
I think maybe we can have, you know, I think the most effective way to do that is to have maybe a town hall meeting, you know, where we can just answer questions or something. We'll have to talk that through and see what the best, I mean, at some point, I, you know, if they're not engaging with, with the volume of our communication, I don't know what to do, but we can give that one more, one more shot to see what that looks like.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna to jump in here, John, because I know you and I have talked about this directly, and we've skirted around it and everything. I've brought it up in school meetings way before COVID. And I just feel like if I'm a parent, I should be able to go to a website, and I should be able to quickly be able to access information that is fluid, that's in sort of real time. And Danielle, I know you and I, you know, I brought it up in a meeting like last year, and, you know, I, we were talking about way pre-COVID, we were talking about communication on the website, and I think you had said, you know, let us know what your suggestions are, and we'll be happy to consider them. And I sent some, you know, sort of little mockups on how to kind of do this thing, because that's, you know, stuff that I, that I have experience with. I really, just to be very direct, we gotta get out of the business of like, well, we sent an email back on blah, 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 and that should be sufficient. And by the way, we gotta get away from, well, we sent an email on blah, 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 but then we also tweeted it out and put it out on Facebook and blah, blah, blah. Communication really is sort of like a two-way street. And where you want to be, is you want to, you want to be able to, if someone says you're not communicating well, or I don't know the answer to a question, you should be able to just demonstrate and just say, oh, yeah, it's right here on our webpage. Here's like the FAQ that we put up, and we update all the time on certain stuff. Well, you, I'll say it again, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it is impossible to over-communicate. But communication isn't just about volume. It's not just about like, just voluminously putting stuff out on social media and on newsletters. You've got to be able to give people ways of accessing information that is quick, brief, to the point, accessible, fluid, updated. And, you know, we've got to get better at that. We just have to. And maybe that's, you know, thinking about some sort of a webmaster. So, John, you're not like in your PJs, like putting stuff out, like you had said in a few meetings ago. You know, we have to be able to communicate in ways that are going to give people the information that, that they need. And I don't want to get into a debate about it, but it's just not, it's, I don't believe it's adequate. That's just my two cents.
Matt, I'm just going to say publicly, I completely disagree with you, and I would just,
I know you do.
I know, but this, this stuff, we have pivoted, we have to pivot every day this year since COVID. This presentation tonight, and this plan was finished at about 4:50 PM. Okay, we are literally having to reinvent the wheel in public education this year. So I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I can't, I can't.
You don't have to tell, you don't have to tell me anything. I've brought up communication way before COVID, like I said.
And I would just add that right now, I think that our parents are more engaged than ever before. And I would say in a typical year, people get busy, and when we're sending a lot of emails, it can get buried. And as parents, we sometimes say, I'll read that later and not read it. But I think when we have school committee attendance upwards of 700 people, so that we're actually having to move on to Facebook Live and other, other ways of including people in meetings, I think that right now, our parents are really clear and informed about what we're talking about. And I think if people aren't attending a meeting because they can't, then I think word of mouth right now is such that parents are telling each other, this was, this is being discussed tonight, this, this happened last night. And our, and we have a personal responsibility during a pandemic, that our principals send out a weekly email with every single thing broken down with links and with the, with the thought that please call if we can give you more information. So I feel like we can always do better with what our website looks like, Matt. And I completely agree with you there, that we have to be looking at that on a weekly basis. I mean, just this week, we found updates that were not, website sections that were not updated, but the manpower of those deep websites, it's a lot of time that we don't have right now. We can definitely improve on that. But I would say our communication has been outstanding in terms of what's happening in the pandemic. And we're also not trying to over-communicate in a way that people are not paying attention when they need to. So I would say that Chandler's parents are pretty clear with what the in-person learning plan might be, as well as Alden. And they've reached out regularly. I would say that our Duxbury parents, their one thing that they're not afraid to do is, if they have questions, they will continue to reach out to people until they are able to connect. And that, and that's a good thing, because I feel like they need to have every part of, every bit of information they can when they're making decisions such as this, when it comes to the health and safety of, of their own children and families. So.
And Matt, I would just like to chime in, and you know, this is one of these things that is so discouraging to me, because, you know, I think we have a, a, a top administrative team, and some of the most dedicated professional capable faculty of any district. And we're a well-substandard resource district in terms of what the community is provided. So I think you just got to keep it in perspective. We're in the bottom 25% of resources that as a community we provided to our leadership and our faculty, and it's influenced, it has impact in every aspect of school operations, from communication to class size, to ability to innovate, to ability to retain and attract. I mean, it hits on all fronts. And so, yes, we can all identify areas, and you're expert in communication. So I think it's natural that you would identify large opportunities for us to improve, but a lot of them aren't even necessarily resource. But I just think we're bottom-tier resources in our district with top-tier expectations from our community, and they're just off. The, the resources that are being provided, and I'm so grateful that we've attracted the leadership and retained the faculty that we have, but it's not what it should be. And I think that's an example. It's like, sure, we could do more. You talk about a web, you know, master or communications director, that would be fantastic in a modern school district. We don't have it. We don't have the resources. So, so that's, I'm grateful that Danielle and John and everyone else in the school principals devote as much as their day to interaction with our parents, and also doing the best I can with communication. But I just, to me, it's a resource question, because the will is there, and the desire is there, but the bandwidth isn't. So that's not to discount what you said, Matt. Don't take my comments the wrong way. But it's like, okay, right, we're not going to be top-tier in all the categories that we really should to be a top-tier district. And a lot, to me, comes back to resources. And that's a community priority.
Julia, were you done with your comments about full return to school?
Yes. And I think I feel that now I need to say that it wasn't a criticism of communication. Was not part of my discussion. It was more making sure that parents understood what they were signing up for. And if you tell me they do, then that's, I accept that.
Okay, so I'm not clear. Do you have a position on February 1?
I, no, actually, I don't. I would like to know how many families are going to pull their children into remote if we change the learning model.
Got it.
Because I think that that, that, to me, is, is important to understand. And if it's, if it's a small number, fine. If the number's larger, you know, that's a lot of students who are missing out on any in-person learning, and I would be concerned about that.
I agree. Okay, Matt?
B comes before G. Are you reserving the right to make your comment last as chair?
I absolutely am. That's my one.
So I, I am actually for the, the plan as it's outlined in returning to school on February 1. And for the reasons that I, that I, that I said before, I feel like there's not going to be an optimal time that's going to make everyone comfortable. But it seems to me that this is a well-thought-out plan. I trust the leadership and the administrations that they've thought this through. Again, I feel like, you know, it's sort of ideal in that we can road-test some stuff and make some changes and revisions over the February break, if that, you know, if it, if it comes to that. So my position is to move forward as outlined.
Thank you. Shannon?
Yeah, probably. No surprise, I'm coming in from the opposite end. So I do not think it's the right time, given the surge, given that it's winter, so we can't use our outside to increase distancing. I think one of the public comments also highlighted the new variant, with just a lot of new stuff. And I completely, I should have started with, thank, thank you to the administration team for all the hard work, because it is a very thoughtful plan. And I think it is, I think it's, it's so well-thought-out, and I, but I'm just really worried about the timing. And I know, I appreciate and acknowledge it, there's no perfect timing, but I think there's just too many factors right now that weigh against it, from my perspective.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm, you know, I kind of am grateful to live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And one of the main reasons I'm grateful is because of the Ed Reform Act of 1993 that keeps amateurs out of running schools, right? Every single one of us on the school committee is not a professional running a school. We're amateurs. We're parents. We're concerned. We're cheerleaders. We're perhaps critics. But I believe in executive leadership. I believe that what our job in part is to do is to hire the best we possibly can. We should challenge where it's appropriate. We should support where it's appropriate. I've got personal reservations. This is hard, because I'm used to in my day job, making decisions. I don't think it's my call. And as much as I have personal reservations, I have full confidence in our administrators, their commitment to our students, but as important, we can't operate a school without the relationships between our administrators and our faculty and staff being completely high-functioning, meaning I entrust the administrators to have the support and cooperation and commitment to carry forward with all of our faculty and staff. So as much as it pains me to not make a decision,
So as much as it pains me to not make a decision, I would say my caveat would be going to school in person is completely not a irreversible decision. And in fact, I would expect a lot could change in the next three weeks between now and February first. And also, once we're in a different model, I think things could change very rapidly for the worse or for the better. And I just have to rely upon what I've seen in the past. Our administrators and our school committee has been critical for not being student-centric for most of the semester. The criticism has swung in the opposite direction that we're not being adult and faculty and staff-centric. So to me, an impossible management challenge, that means we're doing something right because nobody's happy. So, so I would say I am going to support what our leadership recommends and I'm not going to presume I know better. I've said my piece, I have reservations, but I'm, I'm confident that if we go in this direction and the facts remain supportive of this decision today in February first and it's not working, we're going to take corrective action. So that's, that's kind of where I come down.
That was very well said, Peter, I like that. I saved myself for last because I tend to be extremely pragmatic. I am having a really hard time with the pandemic because I'm someone who takes risks. And I haven't done that since last March, I can't, I'm a cancer patient, right? So yes, I go to the grocery store, but we haven't seen family, we haven't traveled, we haven't done anything. And when we talk about, you know, I have two kids in school, so we have to be fully responsible. And I've had one be quarantined already. But I will say that middle school, high school is knocking it out of the park as far as I'm concerned. And I know we had an uptick over the past two weeks because of bad behavior. But we can't change human behaviors. We learned last week with all the madness in DC, like we're just people of different opinions. To Louva's point, if you have an elementary child who is not being educated to the full extent, which none of the kids are this year, nobody's getting full curriculum, that's just a known fact, right? But again, I think middle school, high school, the way they do in hybrid, the kids are online every single day. My kids are doing work every single day, they're getting tons of curriculum and they are having a great year, honestly. There's a lot about it that stinks socially. But if you have young kids who aren't getting the opportunity to have that much curriculum or FaceTime with their teachers, that's a problem. And parents are desperate to find any way to educate their children and to fill the gaps. I totally get that. And to Kristen's point, the, the mental health and especially with young kids. And these are the kids that we, and Chandler, you are recognizing that there might be a learning disability or a processing issue or whatever the proper term is, right? And so our special ed staff has been absolutely fantastic working with the identified kids. But my guess is they're probably kids who maybe aren't identified. So more FaceTime is going to absolutely help all of those kids and it's going to help the mental health. Because kids who are lost and confused, you know, are going to act out in other ways. So Kristen, I totally get that. So someone who absolutely hates to be a fence sitter, which is me, gets both sides. And we did hear from some teachers. And, and now that I'm someone who's over fifty, like I totally respect to the older teachers who are concerned, who have spouses at home that have a comorbidity or an issue. But I think weighing absolutely everything, and especially in light of what Peter said, we can shift it if we have to go remote again, or if we have to go back to hybrid, we can do that. So I don't think there's any other great date. I think February first is going to become March first. Oh, but now we're two weeks out of February vacation, so it's going to become February fifteenth. I kind of feel like as a risk taker, you know, you, you gotta bite the bullet at some point. So after all of that, if it makes sense to know what's going on in my brain, I am in support of a February first return for Chandler and Alden, knowing that we, we can absolutely change it if it is problematic. So John, I don't know where that, how you feel about that or what, does this, does that help you?
No, no, not particularly. I mean, it's clear, here's the thing, it's clear there's no consensus, right? So, which is fine, it's kind of a, it's happening just in general right now as it relates to everything pandemic-related. I think what I would say is I'm going to take this feedback, you know, under advisement and, and go back to the drawing board with my staff and see if this is the absolute right decision for February first, or if there's not some alternative. You know, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's a phased-in approach. Maybe it's a delay, but I, I just, I think it'd be irresponsible, irresponsible just to make sort of a kind of line in the sand decision right now, given the, given the feedback. So I think the best thing I could commit to is we'll make a decision in the next, you know, couple of days based on this feedback, if that's fair. I just, I just think I, I, it's too, it's too nebulous.
So John, just as a comment, I don't think you're gonna get a unanimous ever in this case, you know?
Never, no, I understand that.
Yeah, so I don't, the way I heard it is if we were gonna vote, it was gonna be four or one. And Shannon, I'm not, I'm not arguing for or against, because when we talk about it next time, I, I might have a different opinion. But I don't know, I don't know, I didn't, just listening to the conversation, I didn't hear that there wasn't a consensus.
I got three to two, Peter, because I think Julia is rightfully waiting for information. So my other suggestion would be when you get those numbers back on the twenty-second, with how many you're gonna go to Cohort C. I mean, we could do a, a quick meeting on just that on Monday. I don't, I don't know how you feel about it.
But ultimately, John, you don't need our vote, right? I mean, this is a management issue and, you know, as a school committee member, yes, I have, I've explained my position. But I also recognize this is, this is your call and it's up to you to take on board what we've all said and know that we'll support you in your, in doing your job, which is to manage the district on a day-to-day basis. And as, as Peter said, there is no right, well, as everybody said, there's probably no right answer. It will only be the right answer in hindsight. And so, you know, you have to go with what you know as an administrator and what your administrative team knows.
No, I appreciate that, I just think just some good ideas shared and, and good feedback. And again, this is like in the moment, you know, decision. And we, we, we had all staff meetings today as well, trying to gather feedback. No, I was, I'm confident, I think the kids need to get back to school, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth taking a deep breath after a three-hour meeting and, and you know, maybe wait to signal a final decision. Danielle, do you have a different opinion or, or it's hard to do it or not?
No, and I, I think it's just what everyone said, every decision we're making has pros and cons. And it's as clear as mud what we should do. And I think we have to look at our individual school community, our school resources, the safety precautions we have in place, the feedback from our staff, from our parents on both sides of the aisle. And I think we're, we're gonna just have to move forward with a recommendation, knowing that we're not going to be able to please a majority and that there's no consensus possible here. So it's just, it's an impossible task. But again, we'll make a decision that's based on the best information we have with the student's best interest and the staff's safety in mind.
Well, and, you know, Julia, what, you know, John, sometimes it's good to sleep on it, right? This is a, this is an important, not, you know, this isn't, it's not an irreversible decision. So it's, in the end, it's not that important because if it's not working, we learn more in the next three weeks. You're, we're gonna change course. But you certainly also can sleep on it and then get back together with your team and let us know. Let us know if you want to have further discussion. But it sounds like you've got the support from at least a consensus from the group that we're gonna try and stand up and support you and support the team. So if you want to sleep on it, that's fine. If you want to schedule a meeting in another, whatever, public meeting, you need three days to put notices and stuff and talk about it further, we could, it seems like, whatever you want.
I don't feel, I don't feel a need for another meeting. I just, again, it's, if you see the amount of volume of information that we've had to take in the last twelve hours today, I just hope you can appreciate why I'm not gonna make a decision when we're all kind of exhausted and tired after a three-hour meeting. And by our recommendation, but I just think it's important as part of the process to, you know, to consider what was said tonight.
Okay. Um, why don't we move on to our action items? That is fair. So our first action item is to vote the FY twenty twenty operating budget of, well, we can vote them to, do you want us to vote them together or separate?
I'd take two separate votes on the operating and then the capital.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the operating budget of thirty-eight million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye, and thank you Katie and John for putting together the most transparent budget in the Commonwealth.
Pretty good.
Nice, and Kelly, aye. And then can I have a motion to approve the capital budget of five hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, um, the school committee is going to adjourn into executive session because none of us wants to go to bed tonight to discuss strategies with respect to possible litigation, which would have detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if the discussion were in open session. The board will not return to open session. So can I get a motion to close regular session?
Oh, adjourn. Adjourn, move to adjourn to executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Okay. So John, you'll put us in a different group or do we just wait for people to leave?
Yeah, I'm gonna just occurring to me, I might, are you all on your email?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna close out the public meeting, then I'm gonna send you a link in the next sixty seconds, okay? So just go to your email to come into the executive session meeting, okay?
I'm gonna take a bio break too.
Yeah, see you in a few minutes, okay?
Yeah.
Heather, thanks for coming.